Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming, and thank you to those who are watching from home, if you are. Welcome back to school. I hope everybody had a successful opening. I believe that we are starting with something exciting. And I think we'll take it away, Dr. Bossert.
Thank you. Welcome to the back hall. It has been a very smooth opening to the Elbix Division. We have had some wonderful first few days. I was lucky enough to visit Boyd today with the third graders. We're having a celebration of the third day of third grade. And by ironic circumstance, apparently, the fourth graders are celebrating the fourth day of...
Fourth grade tomorrow.
Which is just crazy. It's been a smooth opening. We've been very thankful. Not good. Things have been going well. We are experiencing a few, you know, of those typical opening of school challenges that we face every year, but we're enjoying watching them get smoothed out as the days go by. So tonight, it gives me great pleasure to pass on an honor and distinction that was proclaimed by the New York State Senate on our behalf, introduced by Senator Marcelino. There is a distinction in New York State about a varsity team being identified as a Scholar Athlete team. And in order to achieve that designation, 75% of the students who participate on that particular team need to have a grade point average of 90 or are higher. And if 75% of the team is 90% on their academics or higher, they are a team of distinction. In order for a high school to be a school of distinction, 100% of their varsity teams need to meet that very lofty qualification. And I'm very happy to report, for the 1617 school year, John Glenn High School was named a 1617 Scholar Athlete School of Distinction and was recognized on the floor of the Senate. So I invited our esteemed athletic director, Mr. Shanahan, tonight to be here and to receive a confirmation from his office. So David, on behalf of myself, the board, and apparently, the New York State Senate, I would like to congratulate you and everyone over at John Glenn High School on a superior job. If you turn it over, you'll see that Senator Marcelino gave us two copies, so you and Mrs. Rizinski don't have to argue about where it gets on.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
David, thank you. One of the things that I truly enjoy about working with our athletes and our coaches is that Scholar Athlete comes in that order. They put their scholastics and their studies ahead of all else and still manage to produce some wonderful results on our athletic field. So David, keep up the good work, and thank you so much.
Yeah, I echo that. I think that not only does it speak to the students and the parents' commitment, but also 100% the coaches' commitment, that academics are just as important as what happens on the field. So thank you to all the coaches as well.
I'm sure. Sure. Thank you.
Okay, so we have two presentations tonight, and one is quite lengthy.
Do you mind if I change the order?
Oh, sure.
Because I believe the bond presentation may require some significant discussion, which it should, I just wanted to go very quickly through some checkpoints on the committee work that is being engaged. If you turn to your board packet, there is a calendar that was drafted that indicates all of the committee meetings that have been tentatively scheduled, along with which board members will be co-chairing the committees and who the administrative liaison will be. This was sent home a few days ago. I hope you had the chance to review it. Did anybody have any questions about any of the information indicated on the draft question?
We just have one correction.
Good.
The technology committee, the last date, we had moved up in general, and we took an equal date.
Okay. I will get that new date from Mr. Trankino and update the chart. The other few things that I wanted to make sure that we were clear about, so expectations were uniform. Our board member participants and our administrative liaisons have been named. They're here according to the chart. One of the things that I think we started to really adjust last year that I want to reinforce is, you all volunteer a great deal of your time and exhaust many efforts in your positions as board members. The primary role of coordinating these meetings, setting the agenda, making sure the minutes are shared, making sure things are posted to the website, appropriately falls on the administrative liaison. And that's a conversation I've had with each of our team members who will be assisting you with these committees. And I want to make sure you understand that, that we're not looking to board members to keep the minutes of the meeting, to post things to the website, to make sure that members are notified about upcoming meetings. That is the role of the administrative liaison. And I appreciate you making yourselves available to work along with them, to make sure it's as you want, because it's also not the role of the administrative liaisons to make the decisions for the committee. They're to act in your place to make sure that everything is correctly communicated. So please make sure you're relying upon them and myself to get all of that done. The only appointed members by policy now are the board committee members. They were appointed. Those meetings will be scheduled and take place. All of the other meetings will be considered open public meetings with fluid membership. Any community member who wants to participate in any of the board committees may do that. They may come to one of the meetings, or all of the meetings, or none of the meetings. And we will post our minutes, and we will post our presentations and future discussions on the appropriate portions of our website, so everyone has equal access to the information shortly after the meetings take place. And last but not least, when we do set our priorities for the meetings, I'm going to ask the administrators who help serve these committees to really focus on aligning the goals of the committee with our goals for the district, which will be adopted formally on the 28th, but have already been drafted long ago, so that each of the initiatives that we take on, we somehow relate to help us to achieve board goals. Any questions? I'm just going to make sure we're on the same page before we start to hold the meeting.
I just have one thing. Okay, there you go. In your context of having meetings open to the public and to the community, I just wanted to clarify that when, you know, the public does come to the meeting, that they are observers, or can they engage in the meeting? Just to keep the continuity of and progression of whatever the topic is that night going forward, so that we don't have people coming in and disrupting that and going backwards. I just want to be clear on what their...
Sure. I think that's somewhat dependent upon the topic that's being focused on and the work of the committee. If the committee has been engaged in evaluation of something over a period of months, and a person comes in for that meeting, I don't think the committee is required to reset the clock. However, I think that there are some committees and functions that are month-by-month and meeting-by-meeting, and people can come in as they desire and be actively engaged. So I really think it'll be up to the board co-chairs and the administrative liaisons to decide to what extent, you know, new members will give input. I think it's also important to note that all of these committees are advisory in nature to the Board of Education, and that there is no policy being set by a board committee. There is no new program that will be developed within a board committee. There may be recommendations coming from committees, but it's the role of the board to vote on any new program or to accept any new policy. So I think it's important that for any community members that work within the committees, that we focus on all the work as advisory in nature, and any recommendation that comes to the board can be accepted or even moderately rejected. But we do appreciate the input of the community when making those decisions.
I think that posting the agenda prior to each board subcommittee meeting, so that folks will know what is going to be included, and if they have an interest in that, they can attend, that would be really helpful, to have that, you know, on the website a week or so in advance, so that people can plan and schedule. That would be great if the administrative team could accomplish that.
Well, as they are all seated here, I won't have a problem conveying that information. And I think it's absolutely best practice to post the agendas in advance and the minutes following the meeting.
And that happens already, so I know that. But also, to your point, Mrs. Wise, I think that some things, and I'll give an example of the homework policy curriculum. We worked on it pretty much all year round. So I think that introducing them as a board liaison in the beginning of the meeting and saying, this is something that we've been working on all year, and has had many facets to it, and certainly, if you're new to this group, you can say after, we'd be happy to update you on the work that's taken progress or that has been in progress, or you can give us a call. Our number's on the calendar. I don't think it's necessary to every single time summarize something, because then the committee members get frustrated. So I think that we'll be able to do that. It's just a new way of doing things, and we'll get into that without a problem.
And from my year of observations, the folks that have come to join us from the community have done with a positive attitude and a desire to help, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, that's very good. Will the current committee members still get an email saying that, or will it just be open on the website?
I think that initially, we can certainly send out the answer to our existing distribution groups.
Transition. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns regarding committees before we embark on what's hopefully a very productive year? Thank you very much. So our second presentation of the night slash early morning is the bond issue. For the members of the community present, we have 47 slides to assist the board in reviewing the proposal that is being brought forward. Yeah, that's why I told you. For consideration. The board is taking no action tonight. I think it's important to note. The board is here to discuss the proposal that's currently being brought forward by the administration in concert with our team from BBS. Our architects were with us tonight. Thank you for joining us, as well as Ms. McDonald. Thank you for joining us. So tonight is for discussion. Tonight is for questions. But tonight should be entered into with the goal of concluding the meeting with a pretty firm grasp of how we're going to move forward, because our timeline is starting to get a bit tight in that when I hold a community forum on the 18th of this month, it's a Monday night at 7 o'clock, I would like to have a strong sense of what the board's vision is for moving forward, so then I can present that vision to our community at large and get feedback from them onto how they perceive the proposal. Bring that back to the board to see if there'll be any further changes, and then ask the board to take action on the 28th of this month of what the final dollar figure will be and what the final spending plan will look like, to hopefully move forward with our legal notices and such, so that a vote can occur on November the 28th. So this is crunch time. I appreciate how attentive the board has been to our proposal over the last weeks, months, and years. The amounts of inquiries and questions that have come in have been very helpful. So we have a good vision of what the board would like to see, and we hope that tonight's presentation goes a long way to answer many of the questions that were raised and addresses some of the concerns that were brought forward. So with that, I'll call upon Mrs. Lachlan to take us through her three-hour design.
You want to get a talk fast? I'll try to talk fast, but make sure we get all the information in there. Board, if you'd like to stop me as we go for clarification, because it is a lengthy presentation, so as we go, please don't hesitate to pause me on. So, but we met last on August 24th, two weeks ago. We presented to the board three separate propositions at that time. We had the first list of major health and safety items, as well as a few educational enhancements we thought were pertinent to the projects. The third proposition was just over $5 million. That had some additional items that we would like to get done. And then we had a third proposition, which was just the turf fields, as well as a concession stand over at John Glenn High School. After conversation at that meeting, the board had recommended to administration to take a look at it, and let's try to rework it into only two propositions. Take Prop 1 and 2, make that Prop 1, and take Prop 3 and make that just Prop 2. So we still are now at two propositions, and we've made some modifications to the lists and things that we had out there in order to come up with where we are today. So we are going to show you two propositions. They are focusing on the health and safety for students, staff, and faculty. That is our main goal in this entire project. Educational enhancements for today's learning, as well as replacing expiring debt with new debt. That's the most critical piece from a financial perspective, is we have debt falling off in the year 2022, and we want to make sure we just replace that with that with new debt, so that we don't see any hot valleys or peaks with the tax cap. So what has happened? What have we done in administration? We've been working with BBS, the architects, closely to try to get this to where we are today. We combined List A and B into one proposal. We added additional drainage into the Boyd baseball field outfield. This was brought up at the last meeting. Boyd West Lot Drainage Covers. We added some money in there to prevent flooding. Those covers have to either be lifted. There's some work that needs to be done based on the review of that parking lot and areas are seeing flooding. John Glenn High School Drainage Area, the shot put area, we've put additional monies in there for that, so we don't see flooding going on over there any longer. The science room renovations, we originally had five rooms in there. After further conversations with the principal and our directors, it is determined that only two of those rooms would really require renovations at this time. And we also added some ceiling fan allocations for classrooms, both at John Glenn High School and the middle school. And this came up, it was not at the board meeting, it's been conversations that have been ongoing about air conditioning in the buildings for the classrooms, the heat, and I think especially now with the start of the new school year and the kids are back in the classrooms, although we've been lucky enough with cool weather, we do sometimes have those hot days. So we've added some money to try to start ventilating and circulating the air up on the upper levels of those two buildings, because those do get the hottest of all. We also created an alternate list, and the purpose of this is, we hope to see some surplus after we are finished with all the projects. And when you have that, you can then move on to do some other items. So the wall paneling that we had in the original proposal, we've dropped down to that list, as that is not such a critical item. It's an aesthetic type of thing. We would like to see it be updated, but we would do that then with any additional funding we have remaining. Landscaping the middle school play area, $40,000. That was in the original proposal. We've been fortunate enough to have the PTAs donate to try to lighten up those areas. So with that, we feel that we could start maybe reducing the costs that we are allocating to there. The new generator for the NAC, which is the Network Operations Center, $125,000. We just decided, let's drop that down to the B-list, as it is a, it would be great to have to keep if we should experience a powder outage. However, given our last experience with Super Soft Sandy, we were able to get through that. So it would be an item that we feel we could drop down. The vinyl floor tile replacement, those are the nine-by-nine tiles that you'll see in a lot of the classrooms. We had a significant amount of money there to replace all throughout the entire district. So as we are, even just did our building walkthroughs last week to deem the buildings ready to open for this week, we found that some of them are still in pretty good condition. So let's take some of that money back down. Maybe we don't need to replace all floors district-wide, but we'll replace those that are definitely being damaged and being held together with duct tape at this time. And we also added some items into the list that for, as per the Energy Performance Contract Proposals that we're working off of right now, that are definitely not being picked up by any of the vendors' proposals, we put them in here as well.
Can you give an example of that, Carrie, that...
The Energy Performance.
...weren't picked up?
So we have some lighting in certain areas that were getting picked up. We have cooler condensers on refrigerators and...
Okay.
A lot of that technical backend stuff that you probably wouldn't see and notice, but it is critical. It would be energy savings cost to the district in the end.
So it's being picked up by the EPC?
It's not being picked up by the EPC.
So you had to add it?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So we're at two propositions. The first one, $34.9 million. The estimated tax impact is $230 a year, which equates to just over $19 a month on the average household, which is a $3,800 assessment here in the town of Huntington. Proposition 2, which is the turf fields, $3.6 million. The estimated tax impact, $71 a year, which is just about $6 a month. Total, those two combined would be $38.6 million, equalling $301 a year, or $25 a month. So these are based on average assessed values. We take what we have from the town assessor's office, what our current assessed values are. These are, again, our estimates, subject to change, of what goes into this. It's building aid. When are we receiving the building aid? What is adable on these projects? They're all adable at different ratios, given the scope of the work. When are we going to start seeing that money flow? The actual time we borrow the debt? What is our interest rate? So we have a lot of assumptions that go into this, but this is our best guess at this time, which we're comfortable with going forward.
Carrie, what's the average debt payment that, what is the debt payment that they pay now, the average household, before our debt?
Our debt on the district right now is like 2.2 million, I believe. So we would be putting, taking on about 2.9 million.
Okay.
Given us.
Thanks.
For you. So what we're going to do is we're going to kind of go by building by building. Last time, we gave a one-slide chart of each of the projects listed by building. We're going to get a little bit more in-depth as to what we have in the projects. So for Harley Avenue, some of the large projects that we have in place are the sidewalks, roof replacement, and cafeteria renovations. Sidewalks are starting to see cracks in the curbs and in the walkways. We would be replacing the concrete sidewalks and curvings along the bus loop in the main entrance area. It's not completely doing every which way, but it's $346,000 to get these corrections in place. Roof replacement, as we've been talking for well over a year now, the leaks going on in the buildings. It rains outside, it rains in the building. This year, we've seen the most extensive damage to the classrooms and the hallways. The roof here is from 1994. It's out of warranty, and we really need to put in new vent caps and replace the entire movement as a whole. Cafeteria renovation over at Harley. The goal in that one is to update the lighting. There's very poor lighting in that space. It would be redoing the ceiling, give it a painting, facelift, replace some terraced floors that are cracked. Also, add air conditioning, as they don't have any large instructional area to use for, that is of air conditioning or any large gathering place. They use that as a multipurpose room, not only cafeterias, where they do their concerts and presentations. So we feel that this would be a great spot to have for air conditioning purposes. As we all know, if you've been there in those hot days, it'd be quite torturous with those doors open. It doesn't help. We'd also be putting in a new sound system for that purpose. So some of the other items, Americans with Disabilities Act renovations, you'll see this throughout every single building. It's bringing certain areas up to the new requirements. The nurses' office in Harley needs to be resized in the bathroom area to accommodate wheelchairs. The stage does not have ADA access. Concrete pads in the kindergarten classroom as well needs exterior entrances put in. The ventilation and exhaust is fresh air intake for some special area classrooms and offices. Drainage over there, the west area playground, it would be additional drainage. This is in the area where we just put in a new, where the PTA just donated a new playground equipment set. We fixed the drainage in that particular area. However, a little further west, you'll notice that there, when it rains, it turns into a lake over there, and it is not usable for the children. So we would be fixing the drainage over there and putting in new fill. The pipe tunnel abatement would be removing asbestos insulation that's within the crawl spaces. This is so our guys can get in there and do the work, and we don't have to contract out to get people that are certified to suit up and go in there. Flooring replacement, as I mentioned before, this is the vinyl tile floors. It would be replacing nine-by-nine floors throughout the building, and this would be, this was $404,000. We dropped it down to $304,000 to replace really the critical areas that we're starting to see crack and lift up. Because by doing this replacement, we would have to do a full asbestos removal as well. Those tiles are all asbestos. We can't do them. We cannot replace them. Therefore, you'll see either carpets or duct tape on those floors to protect that area. Interior door and hardware is providing smoke doors and magnetic door holders throughout the building to meet new fire code. Exterior wall construction, vertical expansion joints being put in, air conditioning. We would put AC redundancy in the Library Network Operations Center. This is where all the computer equipment is held over at Harley. The fire alarm system, it's putting in a fire system shutdown over there. They have the most updated fire alarm system of all the buildings, so they just don't have what the newest would be, which is a fire alarm, fire system shutdown. Wall padding in the gymnasium, put seven-foot-high padding around the gymnasium walls. Questions on Harley before I move on?
What's a fire system shutdown?
It's, um, putting in larger exhaust fans.
Oh, exhaust fans. Okay.
Any exhaust fans or...
Or are they even over 1,000 CFM are required by current code now in order to be shut down if a fire alarm system is activated, so that they do not bring fresh air into the building?
Enter building with some fire alarm answer.
Yes.
I have a couple of Harley questions. The first one is, I know that you said, part of the roof replacement, we're going to replace leaking skylights. I'm wondering if it is more cost-effective and prevents further issues if we just take out the skylights and just roof it in? Has that been looked at?
It has been looked at, however, the skylights that are being replaced are in both the kitchen area as well as the gymnasium, and they're used for additional lighting.
Okay. And then my other question that I have is, I've seen that we're doing some ceiling fans for here at...
I know. I'm asking why we're not, because we also have a hot second floor in Harley, just like we have in Glenn and Middle School. Could that be something we look at? We could certainly look at it. If the board would like us to throw some money on it, we can certainly add additional money. Fred, if I recall, it was about $5,000 per classroom to add ceiling fans, two ceiling fans per classroom. So... Does Harley have any air conditioning rooms?
No.
I know, but I think some rooms usually have air conditioning. Nothing will make that...
Not on the second floor, but on the second...
I just want to be clear on, so in Harley, not every second floor classroom has a ceiling fan?
That's correct.
That's correct. In EMS, do any of the second floor classrooms have ceiling fans?
No.
None of them have. Okay. And in the high school, the same thing. None of the second floor classes have ceiling fans?
That's correct.
Okay. So that would be a full, every single classroom for the two upper buildings, and just to add on if we choose in Harley?
You'd be looking at $5,000 per classroom is the estimated cost, because of the electrical work, the installation, the fees associated with it. So the estimate that we would be working off of is $5,000 per classroom. So if we'd like to add money in any of the other buildings, that's what we would be looking at cost-wise.
And it means we only do this to second floor classrooms and not...
That's what we put in there for now, yes. Just to not drive the cost up too high, but to try to start accommodating some of those areas that we're starting to see overheating a little bit more than others.
Okay. Because I noticed that some of the buildings, the first floor classrooms have ceiling fans. So that's, I'm just trying to get some...
I wish I knew the reason why.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, I think it refers to Boyd.
Yes.
Well, in that particular section of Boyd, it's only a one-story building. So that's, that's pretty much why. I mean...
I think they put those in because of the sun.
Well, but you think about it, in a second floor classroom, it's close to...
No, I can't. It heat rises. I totally understand.
With a first floor classroom, you don't have the protection of the second floor, so now you're getting direct sunlight on that roof, and it's permeating, you know, the roof membrane, and it's heating up the space. So it's almost like being on the second floor. You get what I'm saying?
Yeah. I'm just asking a question that the parent who's going to be on the first floor in the hot room is going to say, who'll come in? That's fine. Thank you.
Anyone else on Harley?
I want to add one suggestion that just came to me, because I think you explained some of the changes that are going to be made to the cafeteria very well by noting that it's also their auditorium, we did programs in there and everything. So I would suggest on the slide to indicate that, either as the odd word of cafeteria or cafeteria slash auditorium, so that people evaluating the project know that it is a double-use space rather than just a single use.
Can I ask one more thing on Harley?
Yep.
The fire alarm system and resulting to your door and hardware upgrades, that doesn't fall under the smart bond?
No, the smart bond work is only for technology, technology upgrades, additional classrooms for a pre-K program or security. Unfortunately, fire, safety is not security.
Okay.
They don't see it that way, unfortunately. Very strict requirements for what you can use the smart bond money for.
And what percentage of the flooring in Harley has to be replaced and what percentage didn't have to be replaced? Do we have any idea, like, is it, it seems that it wasn't that much coming out, but is it... is it a greater percentage that is damaged or not damaged?
We had originally budgeted to remove all nine-by-nine tiles. After the board's request last meeting to try to get the cost down of the bond into the taxpayers, we just sort of said, "Let's just start taking away what can we do without, potentially." And that's where we said of the entire vinyl flooring project, total, district-wide, which $1.2 million. I take that back. $1.6 million. We dropped $400,000 off the top down into the alternate list, knowing that we do have some floors district-wide that are still in pretty good condition. So, we didn't really go through each building and say, "This classroom, not this classroom, this classroom." We kind of just took money off, and now we built a budget of $1.2 million for vinyl tile flooring district-wide, and we'll work within that budget. And the first ones to be replaced will be the ones that are severely damaged. We'll then start moving on to those that are not damaged, and we'll just start slowly removing those floors through time.
One of the challenges that we faced when preparing this presentation was trying to stay under the constraints that we loosely discussed as the limit, $20 a month, things like that. There is nothing that was removed since the August 24th meeting, nor is there anything on the supplemental list that we don't feel would be extremely beneficial to the students in our facilities. All the choices of reductions were difficult recommendations to bring forward, because we see real benefit to everything on the list. But that's part of the reason for this discussion before we move forward. Would we be happy to replace all of the vinyl flooring? Yes, we would like to rid our buildings of asbestos-laden tile for once and for all. We do know that in order to remove the asbestos tiling, it is a significant expense, and if we don't include each of the classrooms in this budget, we will have to be very methodical about the remaining rooms moving forward and including that expense in our operating budget, which is hard to do. But, you know, it's a conversation to have tonight about things that may not be on the list right now that we, as a board and an administration, agree are our top priorities to bring to the public. So, we're going to do that for each of the buildings, so please keep your notes in front of you of things that we have recommended for reduction or we have included that, you know, we may not prioritize ahead of some of the things that we did not. Because I can tell you with confidence, if we could have brought forward everything on the building condition survey, we would have done that. We don't feel that that's a responsible number to bring to the community, and that's our limitation. But we could build a rationale for every thought that enters your head.
I think you bring up a great point, and maybe you can speak to this for, you know, a short period, that some of the things that are on the list, furniture, those kinds of things, curtains, things that people really see as aesthetics. When you look at them, you have a bond every 15 years. Are they adequate? Some of them are, some of them are falling apart, but certainly in 15 years from now and with tax cap legislation, we can't really fit those things into a budget. So, we have to think 15 years ahead of schedule and say, "What is that going to look like in 15 years?"
Excellent point, and I agree wholeheartedly that we are trying to look at this with long-term planning in mind, with understanding of the limitations of a tax cap budget in mind, that in the past, if we came across a significant expense that we felt was a priority to the community, we would say, "I'm sorry, I know last year was a 2% budget, but this year we're going to ask for 5% increase so that we can do this big initiative." That's no longer as plausible in the tax cap budget era. I was fortunate enough to be invited to give a preview of this presentation at the...our Taxpayers Association meeting at the public library on Tuesday. And one of the points I made there that seemed to be well-received is that we do have portions of our proposal that, right now, today, can be deemed adequate. We use the furniture in the cafeteria at John Van High School as an example. It's adequate. The children go in, they sit, there are tables, and there's served food. However, some of the chairs are broken and need to be replaced. Some of the tables are broken and need to be replaced, and some suspect that this furniture is older than the children sitting in them, and the aesthetics and the point of pride in the cafeteria just doesn't exist. And what our community seems to be very receptive of, and what I shared that night, is we want our facilities to match the priority that our community places on education and places on the value of our district. We want our buildings to be a source of pride. We want our students to walk into the buildings and feel that pride, to feel welcome, to feel comfortable, and feel that their schools are a place that they want to share with their friends and encourage visitors to come to. Using the John Van High School cafeteria as an example, you don't get that when you walk in the room. And we think that although some of the recommendations are aesthetics and appearances, they're important, because our buildings right now don't reflect the value that our community places on education and that our students deserve as a source of pride when they walk into our buildings. And that can be said for so many of our presentation items that exist in each of our four buildings. Adequate, perhaps. Could we live with it? Perhaps. But will things continue to deteriorate over the next 15 years to a point where perhaps we can? Yeah, I'm pretty confident telling you that, and that's why we developed a list in the manner in which we did. We do want the end result of this bond to be our facilities in a place where the students and our community consider these buildings a source of pride. And unfortunately, right now, we're not that.
Carrie, hold on, sorry. I have one more question about asbestos tile.
Yeah.
Is it cheaper if we were to do all rooms at one point versus doing some now, some later, or just each room that's done at a time? Is how the damage is done, it's one question?
My often answered answer would be, there would be no difference in cost, but Fred, you can speak to that if there is any difference?
Actually, you do get an economy of scale by doing multiple rooms at a time, because the contractor mobilizes the site one time instead of multiple times. You're going to have to have an air monitoring firm come in, a project monitoring firm, and again, the more they mobilize, the more they're going to charge. So, there is definitely some savings to have more done at one time rather than trying to piece it together.
I ask that because the seasons, they did their abatement, they came in and did one-day excavation abatement for that period of those tours. There would be cost savings doing it all at once.
They can. They, you know, they're going to...there's going to be one decon rather than multiple decons if you do a piecemeal, so it's absolutely going to be some savings associated with doing it.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, we'll move over to Boyd. Some large projects over there would be the roof replacement, again, some sidewalks, a new drop-off loop, as well as a new parking lot. Roof replacement, as you can see, we're having some puddling up on top of our roofs. There is some areas that are protruding, and the vents are starting to see some cracks and deterioration as well. So, it would be to replace the entire roof over at Boyd. The sidewalks at Boyd, not as much work to be done by them. It's $48,000. It is, there's in the curb areas as well as some cracked cement that would be replaced in some of the areas. New parking lot. This is a big proposal. It's $300,000. This would go into the back of the building, which is where most of the staff is parking. It's where the buses do pull in, and it is adding over 60 parking spaces over there. This would allow Boyd to actually hold functions of their own in their building. They have a beautiful auditorium over there that gets underused because of the parking situation. So, by adding a new parking lot over there, we would be able to utilize that auditorium for most of the events that they handle, and they wouldn't have to come over here to the middle school or to the high school.
And currently, that is on property?
I was just going to say the same, yes. It is our property that we would be putting it on. A new parent drop-off, again, this is a proposal to be looked at further in detail. This was just to get an initial scope of work so we can come up with a cost. It's about $260,000. Anybody that's driven over there at Boyd at dismissal or arrival, it gets backed up all the way onto the street, and you have a dangerous through-traffic right there on the property of parents kind of scooting around each other. So, we would create a third lane, which would be designated just for pickup and drop-off, which would allow the guests or staff to easily come in and out of the building without interruption. So, some other things going over there, again, some ADA renovations. The nurses' office, again, needs wheelchair accessibility in their bathroom. The large group instruction room does not have wheelchair access, and the faculty bathroom does not have ADA accessibility either. Flooring replacement, the nine-by-nine tiles, as we've been discussing. Critical areas in this building would be the gym floor as well. That is not nine-by-nine tiles, but that is included in this total cost, as the gym floor over at Boyd is somehow going hollow. So, we really feel that is a safety issue, and we need to get that taken care of as soon as possible. And the kitchen flooring over there needs to be done over. The surface of it has pretty much been lifted up and cannot be polished any longer at this point in time. Air conditioning, providing air conditioning in the main office area as well in the cafeteria over there, again, to provide another area of a large group use. While they do have the auditorium that does have air conditioning, putting it in the cafeteria where our students congregate during the day would be also a great place to have that. The main office area, they do have window units in there. As you know, anybody that may have window units, they are running electric at a much higher cost than what a central air system would be, and by putting a central air system in their building in that area would be a little bit more cost-effective. And I believe it was only about $80,000 at Boyd. Right? $200,000, sorry.
Carrie, when you speak of the main office and putting the air conditioning in there, I know the nurses' office is right adjacent to that. Does that incorporate the nurses' office, or are you keeping the AC unit in the wall there?
It doesn't incorporate...no, it's just the main office area, that's all.
It's a window unit.
It's a window unit in the nurses' office, right?
Yeah. Again, wall padding, as we had over at Harley, seven-foot-high wall padding around the perimeter of the gymnasium. This is just to protect the students. They're riding scooters, running into the walls, playing basketball, and it would just be a safety item putting into place over there. Some additional items, again, magnetic door holders where needed. Those are for when the fire alarm system does go off, those magnetic doors release automatically to shut. We would replace the library exit doors with fire-rated doors and hardware. Currently, there are two egresses in the library. One egress is into the faculty room, so we would be correcting that to make sure that they are fire-rated doors, as well as correct the elevator egress area, which is currently opening into a space that is not fire code sufficient. So, we would be correcting that area as well. Pipe tunnel abatement over there, the crawl spaces, remove the asbestos insulation. Fire alarm system, this would be replacing the entire system with an ADA-compliant system as well as updating this carbon monoxide detector system, which has been mandated by New York State. We've currently put a...we are up to code with that with some measures we've put in place at this time, but we would like to tie it all together just to have the system be monitored a little bit more closely. Ventilation and exhaust, fresh air intakes in the special led room and psychologist's office. And drainage, as we mentioned before, we added the baseball outfield along Cuba Hill Road, the west parking lot, and also included in this is the area in the back of the building, the entrance over by the auditorium that tends to back up right into the building. There's a little bit of slope there, and it's a drainage issue, so we would be fixing that. Questions on Boyd?
So, Carrie, the air conditioning at Boyd is including the conditioning of the cafeteria, which I guess would be $250,000 if $100,000 is going to the main office for air conditioning?
Yes.
And we already have air conditioning there, it's just that it's window boxed?
Correct.
Okay. And what about Harley Avenue? Are they window boxed? Because I don't see any air conditioning on the...they're window boxed, but you didn't put that in the budget?
I think I have one split in the main office.
So, they have air conditioning, just, but not central air?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Can I ask a question on Boyd? Part of drainage that is at the bottom of that void on the baseball field, you allocated $110,000 for that. Have you identified the cause of that flooding, and that this proposal will alleviate that? Because that seems to be really a concurrent problem that's been there all the time.
Well, we had actually looked at this a few years back and had dug some test holes there to try and figure out what the drainage issue was, and basically what we found is layers of clay throughout, and what happens is the clay does not allow the water to leak down through, so that's what's going on over there. So, we're going to have to break through those clay layers in order to get the water down into the sandy soil that would report to the...
But this proposal will address that and correct it? It's not just a...right? This is providing that you're going to remove the clay, excavate it, and put in topsoil or whatever, absorb it, maybe put some drains in or suns in?
Well, there's a couple ways to do that. You can do deep sand injection, you can get through the clay layers that way. You could put drainage in the area, surface drainage in the area, walk up the field, repitch the field to take the water that way. So, those are the two things that we could look at potentially doing in that area. But yes, it will resolve the issue that you've been having there for a while.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
And if the drainage continues to be a problem, how long of a warranty do we get on that kind of fix?
Well, the warranty, say, in two years. You have two years to evaluate your question.
So, two years, if we had a drainage problem again, no matter how much rain we had, it would be fixed at no cost to us?
Yes, as long as the contractor did not do something properly or...
Then we'll come back to where we had our discussion last time about our bids, that we're required to bid all of our projects out, and part of that, there would be guarantees within those bids. So, when we're doing the bids on the drainage work, we would have to make sure we're including certain guarantees for these areas that we're talking about to make sure we don't have these issues anymore. So, it would be then on the contractor, and that's where it would come into play with working with council, who's going to write those bids up for us to get those guarantees in place. The other issue is, we have 43 inches of rainfall within a day. I think, well, Manhattan's going to be flooded at that point, but this work is to get rid of all that drainage with the guarantee that we can write into those bids that is typical of the work to be done.
Okay. And what did you just say before, as long as the contractor followed proper procedure and that kind of thing?
So, you know, what I'm trying to say on the warranty is if, I don't know if I can come up with a good example, but if something changes, you decide to put more clay down on the infield or something like that, which affects the drainage, obviously, that would not be the contractor's fault.
Right. So, if we do something to affect the drainage? Okay.
But if the design wasn't correct until we alleviate the problem, then that would be covered under the warranty?
Yes.
Okay. As also opposed to if the contractor did not do something correctly?
Correct.
As soon as...
Okay. It's two years from final payment, so it's probably a two-and-a-half or three-year warranty or guarantee by the time it's all said and done.
I think what I'm hearing from the board, and I've been previous to some other conversations that take their place, is that some of the issues that with water and drainage have been ongoing over long periods of time, and this is not the first time that we've invested funds to try to correct it. But I think the board is looking for as much assurance as possible that we feel this fixes the issue once and for all. I think that's the assurance that we're looking for.
Yes, exactly.
I'll have one more question to add to that, and it's, I do something to get back to Hassan, so no problem to you. The taxpayers' meeting, I've got to contest this, there was a concern that although we left the lowest bids a responsible bid, but those companies may, you know, do litigation, go out of business, so within those two years, got the bid, what if they wonder, what if there was laws taking place? Then what happens to the work as far as the guarantee?
You have a bond.
I'm sure it's all in the house, so it would be written in there, but we then go back out for a warranty for somebody else, just a little, if you can, if not, then back on the exercise.
No, you would have a bond as part of that, so if the contractor goes out of business during that two-year period, you would call the bond company, and they would be required to remediate whatever the issue is.
It's what's called a bid bond. So, any of these large projects, they all require what's called a bid bond from all the companies, and that's the protection to the district for such items.
Thank you.
And council writes up all these...they write all these bids with all the specs and make sure that we're fully protected on all these projects. Any other questions on Boyd? So, the middle school. The middle school, I think, probably has the most amount of work going on. Large projects, roof replacement, cafeteria renovation, art renovation, family consumer science renovation, auditorium renovation, the locker room repairs, drainage issues again, sidewalks, parent drop-off, and bus parking lot. And then there's more at the end. Roof replacement, as you know, continuous flooding going on in this building. These are actually from the most recent that we had, district office, where it actually These are actually from the most recent that we had, district office, where it actually flooded up from the floor and up on the second floor, right before school opened, it was pouring into our hallways. So it is a continuous issue that we have here in this building that we are looking to finally rid of the issue going on. Cafeteria renovation, again, here would be new finishes, which is your molding paint, trim work, some new ceilings, new lighting, new furniture to replace the outdated and broken furniture going on in there, and replace the door dividers, which are in there. If you don't know, they have these accordion-style doors. We would be looking to replace those with something different that would not obstruct the view of the cafeteria, and we'd just make this space a little bit more inviting for the children to come into. In addition, we would add air conditioning as well into this cafeteria.
If you could just pause there for a second. Air conditioning keeps coming up for large spaces, and I want to explain that. While some may see that as somewhat of a luxury item, I am identifying it as a health and safety item. Because we don't have classroom spaces that are routinely air-conditioned, I feel it's important that we have large group areas in each of our buildings that are. There are some days in the spring and early fall that become oppressively hot, and I think it's important that there is a place that is cool that we can bring students to should they be, you know, experiencing that type of day. The fact that it's a large group area like cafeteria or auditorium will enable us to capture most of the building, not all of the building, on this type of day. And I think it's an important safety feature that we need to add to our buildings, that there's always going to be a place that can be comfortable when we're having that type of oppressively hot day.
In addition to that is, especially at the middle school and the high school, if we have cafeterias air-conditioned, they could be used as large area testing spaces. So for Regents exams, AP exams, state exams, what have you, we could then start utilizing those as an additional spot that is a cool, comfortable place for the children to take these exams.
And it, we were asked to evaluate the expense of air conditioning for all of our facilities, all classrooms. It's cost prohibitive. It, it wouldn't be a responsible expense to ask the taxpayers to absorb. So we feel that this is the best scenario that we can bring forward for the expense associated with it, to know that there is a safe, cool space in each of our buildings that can capture all the students.
This has nothing to do with the bond, but if some of the kids get air conditioning for the Regents, then all the kids have to get air conditioning for the Regents. It can't be some are in a very hot space and some are nice and cool and comfortable, which, yeah, that's, for another day.
Noted. As well, the art rooms over here in the middle school, as you can see, the cabinetry work is becoming old and worn. We would add a storage room, replace all casework. Your casework is your cabinetry, your moldings, those type of items, new finishes, which would be paint, new floor, ceiling, and lighting going on in the art rooms. Family and consumer science rooms, $540,000 to go to a full renovation of this room. As you can see, these are some old cabinetry, some old appliances that we're working under. A lot of these, our guys are rebuilding just to kind of get through the programs that we're offering here. And as things are falling apart, they're kind of creating new ways to have storage in there for these kids to learn the program that's being taken place. So again, it's a full renovation, casework, appliances, finishes, floors, ceiling, lighting, and as well as adding a purge fan here in this building we don't have, which is basically your exhaust fan. They don't have the proper ventilation for some of the cooking projects that they do here in this building. Auditorium renovations, as many know, sitting in board meetings in those auditoriums, this will be a key item. When we do the forum on September 18th, we will just ask everyone to please take a look around and see what is going on. The carpets are ripped, they're stained, the ceiling is an old plaster asbestos-style ceiling that would have to come down, need a total abatement, which is what is kind of adding to the drive-up of the cost here. We would be replacing all seating within here, replace the curtains on the stage, the air conditioning chiller, and repair the ductwork that's going through there, the sound system, the stage floor, tile floor, carpet. So this would be a complete remodel going on in the auditorium. Drainage, our favorite topic. This, what you're seeing here is on the side by the buildings and grounds area and the flooding that takes place, we would be adding additional drainage in there to get rid of the flooding going on, as well as pave the area there. Currently, under gravel and dirt, and obviously, as you know, as it floods, it's getting worse and worse. So we would add paving over there. We would also be adding additional roof drains to make sure that the bubbling up of the floors that we had last storm would not occur any longer.
And again, I just want to clarify again, that the problem was analyzed and a solution and the cost is based on providing a solution to that, to resolve that problem.
The roof drainage issue?
The slide that we just came through with maintenance areas.
Yeah, that area is adding drainage, I mean, that's the solution to it.
There's no drainage there at all currently.
The roof drains coming up through the cleanouts in the hallway, we're not 100% sure what the issue is there. It could be a partially broken pipe, it could be debris, silk, things that have filled up some of your pools that are out there. So we put enough money in to be able to investigate that and go out and correct that issue.
So we won't know until we actually start getting on the roof, ripping the roofs apart, doing, snaking through to see what's going on with the pipes. There's a lot of investigative work that has to be done in order to fully determine, but we've put enough money in there to do that investigative work as well as do repairs that we, we feel could potentially be causing these issues. Sidewalk repair here in the middle school, a lot of this is in the front of the building over by the play areas. We're seeing deteriorating areas, concrete cracking, and some tripping hazards going on. Locker room, I apologize, these are not the best of pictures. I had to run in quick while the children were not in there. And this is of the boys' locker room. I was able to find a male teacher quick to get me in there. This would be giving new lockers and benches, renovate the toilet shower rooms, coach's office and team rooms. Currently, the coach's office is kind of a hidden area on the side wall. They don't have full supervision of what's going on in those rooms when the teams are in there and the students are in there. So it would be our goal to make sure that we have full supervision going on, as well as it's a functional space. The lockers, they did a pretty good beating throughout the course of the year. So it is just time that the middle school locker rooms do get that repaired.
Is this the original design from when the building was constructed?
Yes.
So the lockers, all the equipment is the original equipment?
Also a question on that one. The showers aren't really utilized by middle schools?
Correct.
Is there a way that we could not do the showers and stalls, also make extra storage or something, use the license and the book?
As we move through, so we've allotted $1.2 million to do locker room renovations. We haven't come up with a drawing as to how we would do that renovation. We haven't designed the locker room at this point in time. It is just based on current work that BBS is doing and what they're seeing out there in the field of different work that's going on. That's how we draw up these estimates, or I should say, they draw up the estimates. So, yes, most certainly. Is when we get to the point of now renovating it, we will start sharing our drawings and ideas of things that we see would be fit, because, like you said, the showers are not being utilized here in the middle school. You are required to have showers, up at the high school level at least. It is something we actually just spoke of today, that we have to talk to Mr. Shanahan about, if whether or not the middle school does require at least one shower. And that would be because of the wrestling programs. The wrestling programs do require the children to shower after due to being on those mats and such. So it is most certainly something we can look at to see if we only need to have one shower in place and not have five or six. If we remove that, have just the bathrooms, have one shower, and then utilize the rest for either additional lockers or storage.
So the wrestlers use the middle school showers?
We don't know about the middle school. High school, yes, they're, they're required, and high school showers do get used. But the middle school, that is something we, we're discussing today, and we need to verify whether or not they use them. And if they're required to. That's more, that's, that's why it's an athletic question. I believe Mr. Shanahan would know, and if he doesn't, he can get me the answer through us.
Okay, great, we can have that, that would be great. Thanks.
There are very few members of the public with us tonight. I'm sure there are scores watching from home, but if the board would allow. Mrs. Carter, did you have a comment?
Oh, I just wanted to say, I have a comment in the school, in the locker rooms, they use the shower stalls as changing areas. I know this, I know this past year, my girls' house chief was working on all the things they were bringing to the middle school. One of the things that they wanted and felt strongly about was having curtains to come in the shower stalls for that purpose. They didn't end up doing it because the, I think that they were located somewhere and put up by the district, but I think it was just important to kind of say that they're using the showers, but then they feel, they feel they need an area.
Right, thank you.
Parent bus loop reconfiguration here in the middle school. So this is a proposal we put out there back in May, and we've had some discussions. The board has raised some questions with regards to the drawing. This was an idea that Dr. Giganti had when we were talking about this. Everybody knows that this building as well, we have a parent drop-off, pickup problem. It does get backed up on Kenneth with the buses coming in, parents coming in, staff coming in. So this was just an idea that Dr. G had given to us, and BBS came up with a drawing. This is not the final project, it's a proposal. It was to give us, again, a cost estimate. The idea was to have a crosswalk right from Kenneth to the building that is safe for the students and that they're not cutting through a parking lot with driving cars. So that's what these little green things are here. That's your crosswalk straight up. In the middle there, you're seeing, you have drop-off loops on both sides. This is block, so you would have an entrance and exit here, and an entrance and exit here. Buses would all fill in here, and there's enough space here for the buses to just pull out, they're not legally allowed to back up. The conversation I had with one of the board members in redesign of this potentially is to take this crosswalk and put it over here and block this off from parent entrance, just allow the buses entering, and the parents would be entering and looping out through here. Another conversation is to allow parents to come in, remove this, which could cause confinement. If you're picking up your child, the person two in front of you is waiting for their child who decided to socialize for 10 more minutes, yours is in the car, you have a dentist appointment, now you're late, you're honking, and we have other issues. So we realized, okay, maybe this is too confining. If we widen this and make it possibly a three-lane drop-off, expand this down to create the parking lot here a little bit further. A lot of options that are out there. I then met with Dr. Sapienza last, two weeks ago, and showed, shared with her the drawing, shared with her the issues we've been having, the visions that we have going forward and what we would like to see, and asked her, please stand outside, as she would, on parent drop-off and pickup in the first week and a half of school, and let me know your thoughts. So her and I will be meeting early next week to take a look at this again and kind of get a feel for what she thinks could potentially work. We're continuing to take feedback on this and different options that we could do. I understand in her first day of school, she was quite shocked at the chaos taking place in this building and quickly realized, yes, we need to do something. So it's going to be imperative that we come up with what? The $1.2 million is the higher-end cost, that is to create this. There could be a cheaper way to do it with maybe not adding the additional curbing of these, this blocking off if we move this over. So there's some other options out there, and if that comes in, then that would lower, obviously, the overall cost of the project, which would allow us to maybe attain some of the items that we have on the additional list.
And if I may follow that up, we're not asking the board to consider a plan for the middle school drop-offs this evening. The dollar figure there is there as a placeholder. We feel that's on the high end. That would give us the flexibility to come up with a proposal that meets the needs of student safety. We know something needs to change. That $1.2 million affords a good deal of concrete and asphalt and restructuring of the existing lot. But we feel this needs a full investigation, it needs lengthy discussion, many options presented and tested. So we're just asking you to consider a dollar figure. I'm not looking for a decision tonight on what the procedure should be. I think it's important that we spend a good deal of time researching multiple options. I don't think it's fair to pin anyone into the decision tonight. I think the dollar figure helps give us a range in which we can expect to spend. I, I think we have full agreement that a change needs to occur. I think we have some unsafe conditions now, and this just gives us a start.
Can I ask if someone from the architectural firm actually stood out there and looked at the problem, or did we just take this recommendation from Dr. G? Someone?
Yes, we met with their expertise, their expert in this area.
And you just stood there for a couple of days in a row and saw what the issue was?
And he, he watched the drop-off and pickup. We sat in Dr. Bosman's office at his table with all the landscape drawings that we have, the aerials, the different...
Configurations.
Kind of talked it all out. But yes, their, their traffic expert did come over to take a look at it, and we'll continue to do that as we start moving through different ideas. We'll utilize their expert in the, in the firm.
Okay, and that place card of $1.2 million, that's about average when you, I'm just wondering where, if we don't use that configuration, that's kind of an average?
Yeah, that should be sufficient if we, if we modify the configuration. We're looking at that whole area, so we don't believe that you're going to expand too much further in that area. So where I put a curb line, where it's a sidewalk, it should really play into that...
Into that figure.
So is it fair to share with the board that that would be a high-end number and we can work several different designs within that spending plan within that $1.2 million?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay, thanks.
I just want to clarify, so the amount, the $1.2 is based on utilizing this huge square footage of area, and then that number actually comes from a dollar square foot now, correct?
Yes.
So that, you know, you're taking the maximum, right now you designed for the maximum now, so that would say it's, you know, $100 a square foot or something?
And just so you know, this does provide for the same amount of parking spots that we have currently. We're not losing any, even though it may look like it because we're cutting the parking lot in half and we're putting all the buses in the front, it is the same amount of spots that we currently have. So the additional items over at the middle school would be, again, ceiling fans in the second floor where necessary, music suite renovation, renovate the band and choral area, the practice rooms, provide decommunification in the music area, provide handrails at the ramps for ADA access. Americans with disabilities are compliant, again, the nurses' office bathroom, make it ADA-compatible as we would do in the other buildings. Interior doors and hardware, provide magnetic door holders where they're needed for those that are either broken or don't have, we would add them. Septic system would be raising the gym and septic tank cover to grade, we're having some issues over there. So this would be just raising that up to the proper level it should be at. Floor replacement is our 9x9 tiles we've discussed. Ventilation, fresh air intakes in certain locations around the building. A lot of it is our small interior office space or small operational space areas. Air conditioning, this would be air conditioning in the main office area to replace the window units they currently have running. Replace air conditioning with redundancy in the network operations center, that is the technology center in district office, and reconfigure the air conditioning for the district office areas that allow for split system for those that don't have a window. So those are on the interior wall offices, they are controlled by one individual, is controlling four different offices. So it is dependent on the temperature of that one person as to how everybody else will feel that day. So I can tell you, they all dress in layers and they all have sweaters depending on Mr. Tranquino's body temperature. So that's how it's working right now. The fire alarm system, we would replace the entire system here with ADA-compliant system and carbon monoxide monitoring detection. The ADA system is providing for the flashing lights within the entire system. And the pipe tunnel abatement, again, in the crawl spaces, remove the asbestos insulation so our guys can get down there and do work.
Carrie, do you do the breakdown of the air conditioning for the, for the operations center? Do you know how much that is, about $500,000?
Uh...
Do not?
The NAC?
Eighty thousand.
Is $80,000. The district office air conditioning to fix the split level, the split units is $200,000, and then the main office area would be $250,000.
I'm sorry, what was district office?
Two hundred.
Okay, thank you.
And the other one, $250,000?
$250,000 would be the main office, the entire main office area. They all have individual window units, of which they're starting to see some drafts and some leaks and such because of those units.
I just want to ask again, the firewall system, again, even in this building, is not under, it's not under the smart bombs?
Anything else on the middle school? No? We'll move on to the...
As far as the NOC system, as we grow as a district, are we going to need to have another spore series space to be air-conditioned to store the units or a control center or any of that?
I will defer to Mr. Tranquino.
Sure, I can answer that. So at the way that technology is progressing now with most things being hosted systems, the necessity for us to rack file servers and storage space... the necessity for us to rack file servers and storage space, which exponentially was growing for the last 20 years at IT, I don't see that in the future at all now. Most systems are hosted, they're on the web, we simply connect to them. So all that bulky server racking has really been reduced in the last five years, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you. We will move on to John Glenn High School. Large projects, roof replacement, cafeteria renovation, art room renovation, family consumer science room renovation, guidance suite renovation, sidewalk repairs, tennis courts and auditorium renovation.
Carrie, I hate to interrupt you, but Mrs. Hall, on the EMS family consumer science rooms, does every student have to take a class in family consumer science or is that an elective?
No, it's a requirement because of six, seven, eight grades.
So every single student goes through that classroom? Thanks.
May I say that occasionally the student program is required and that some pieces to it, that they might not have to reduce?
I see what you're saying, so if someone gets academic intervention, that kind of thing, they may not go through there. But most of the, the majority of the students do.
I'll also speak for Mrs. Wilkens in that we also like to use those family consumer science classrooms for portions of our life skills program for some of our special education students, so those rooms are not exclusively used just for family consumer science.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Roof replacement at John Glenn, again, cluttering in the hallways. This is our most recent storm that we had that we're seeing, our classrooms and our hallways are seeing leaks throughout. Cafeteria renovation at John Glenn High School. Again, it's similar to what we would do here in the middle school. We would make it a high school cafeteria, almost a college-like feel for the students, a more welcoming environment, new finishes in ceiling and lighting. We would do a replacement of the overhead pass doors which were similar to what we have here in this building in the middle school. New furniture to replace the old broken furniture and we would add air conditioning as well into this cafeteria. You walk into that room and the ceiling is quite low, as you can see, it's a multi-level style ceiling. It is not a very inviting environment. A lot of cafeterias that have been upgraded now, if you've stepped into any other high schools, are kind of giving you that high top table feel, a little bit more of a welcoming environment and by doing so, we could maybe start keeping our children on campus utilizing our programs that we have here, having lunch, which would also help alleviate some of the traffic flow we have going on over at the high school as well.
And Carrie, the cafeteria in the high school is also the original cafeteria?
Yes.
Furniture on the wall?
Yeah, correct. The art room renovation, this is a full renovation and adding cabinetry replacement for art shop C. As you can see, they are lacking some storage. They're piling things up wherever they can in order to have instructional space. Family and consumer science in the high school, my favorite rooms to walk into. If you have not yet, I encourage you to try it. You will walk through Pleasantville, it is fun and I think it smells like it too. These cabinets, I couldn't even, they're from the 50s I think. It is the original. The appliances, they've been updated but they are still out of date appliances. It is just not a functional space anymore. We have had family consumer science teachers, new teachers that have come in, they have been trying to do the best they can with whatever they have in their budget to update some things. Again, our guys are repairing cabinetry as they're falling apart. So we would replace all the cabinets, use appliance replacement, new finishes, floors, ceilings, and give that whole space a new upgrade. This is not a program like the middle school where every student has to take. It is an elective program, but again, like Dr. Bosswood said, our life skills students do use this as well over at the high school. The guidance suite. The current layout over there, and this too is another space, if you haven't been in, just step into it, you feel like you're walking into your grandparents' basement. The ceilings are very low, it kind of just needs a facelift over there. We did add an office space last year so that we could have our school psychologist, social worker within that area. We do need to do new finishes, floors, ceilings and lighting. We would be reconfiguring the entire space for a college and career center. Just make it a little bit more inviting for the high school students to go for advice, someplace they can have a large group meeting room with their family and their guidance counselors, a private space to have those conversations if needed in a larger space. So I know Dr. Bosswood is itching.
You were hitting all of them, obviously, she generally left one out. Mrs. Lockman pays careful attention when we have our conversations about instructional issues, which is very impressive, thank you. We don't have a confidential environment, we don't have an area where families can meet with counselors. We don't have an area where when we have college representatives come in isolation where we can place them for students to have private meetings for recruiters. We're looking to make it an inviting place where students want to spend time and seek out time with their counselors. The pictures don't really do the area justice. From the photos, I think some may interpret it truly as inadequate space. I think if a visit is paid to the high school counselor's office, it gives a very different, less appealing nature when you walk into the room. It's a place where I think students are very hesitant to spend time. We really would like to make some material changes to correct that. One of the things that came up as a result of the meeting with taxpayers was just that, that sometimes pictures don't do justice to the projects that we are trying to recommend. So one of the things that we'll be doing following the board's final decision about what to include is give some walking tours of our facilities and we will, we won't take anybody up on the roof, but we will certainly find spots within our buildings to show people exactly why we're looking for remedy. This will be one of the places that I would eagerly take members of our community because I'm not sure the picture really tells the story of what's happening in our guidance office. Our guys have done a great job with the limited resources, we've given them to make it the best possible, but it really needs a much more elaborate oral.
What do you foresee when you say reconfigure? So you're looking for space for college folks to come and do interviews of children? What else, and private space for families although most families meet in the office with the guidance counselor? So what other?
Some of our counseling focus aren't even adequate for a child with two parents to meet with the counselor. Now that we've moved the social worker and the psychologist into the guidance suite, some of the offices lost square footage to add those to two other adults. We have some space where there's a kitchenette type setup. Is it in the picture? No, it's on the left side of the top picture. We're looking to put in a meeting room space, a small conference room. We're looking to more equitably divide the counselor spaces and the social worker and the psychologist to make them a little more uniform so that all the rooms can adequately have a family meeting and just raise the ceiling and take away the pillars and replace the carpet and just some things that will make it a much more welcoming environment.
Okay, so the square footage is, the basic square footage is staying the same, just re?
Reconfigured.
To be functional. Currently, we have, I know this year we had a lot of colleges come to onsite acceptance. I know there is a conference room up on the second floor, was that utilized or where was that caught and done?
I don't know. There is definitely a nice conference space in the upstairs library that certainly could have been utilized for that. I'm not talking about relocating college chair activities, clearly we need a very large space for that. But on the days where the individual recruiters come and meet privately with students, we would love to place that within the guidance suite.
So is it still going to house all the?
Mrs. Wilson, fill for her.
I just wanted to let you know, we run CSC meetings, the upstairs conference room, and I know students also go in there sometimes for small group instruction. There's not a lot of space in my consulting.
My only question is that because having been in that guidance office a lot, it is a very small footprint and it is dysfunctional right now. It's not, so I understand you want to optimize the space and be able to, I'm just trying to clarify in my mind how you're going to accommodate with the moving footprint and that's why I just wanted to.
A lot to do by utilizing your square footage and putting in different desks. Some of the desks that if you've noticed in our offices are extremely large and some of them are just because we had no furniture and either teachers or our guys or alone have built them. I think it's Mrs. Hall's desk is a door that was used to create a desk. So we use the resources that we have, which we don't have much, so.
Yes, very good, they have standing desks.
She never complains.
So it would be, you know, by reconfiguring the layout of even just where the secretarial desks are would allow for so much more space by getting proper sized furniture for the space. It would just give it so much better of a feel in that room.
Is there a guidance model that you're following such that is the reason why you have the psychologist and everybody in that room?
Yeah, from an instructional standpoint and from a student management standpoint, we felt that having our entire PPS staff together and the ability to team and collaborate was advantageous and our staff members agreed wholeheartedly, they made some sacrifices as the space they had to all be together.
Okay, thank you very much.
When the work's being done, I mean, ideally we would hopefully be done this summer when there's nothing going on, but what's to take place during the school year?
We would have to relocate people.
We would relocate locations so that it's still the counseling center where the kids are at that time, it's just not.
It would potentially be in the conference room, like, yeah, we would be shifting people around in order to get the work done. But like you said, in instructional spaces, the ideal time to do it is during summer.
But I will commend the Buildings and Grounds Department for having constructed the two new office spaces that currently exist during the school year last year. Once we received the additional funding from Senator Marcelino's office, they made this happen while school was in session by working nights and weekends and during recess periods to make it as least obstructive as possible and it counted.
Sidewalks up at the high school, as you can see where the brick meets the curb, there's a lot of settling differences that are happening, there's cracking going on. So we would replace the bricks throughout the sidewalks that have settled, creating tripping hazards and provide new asphalt along the gym exterior doorways in the back of the building.
Carrie, I can personally attest to that one.
I know. So can I get the accident reports?
Having attended to a person in the community who fell, who tripped on that coming out of a concert and broke her nose with blood everywhere.
And I think that was two weeks after somebody previously had fallen, so.
Those need to be fixed.
It needs to happen over there.
Yeah.
I have a question about that. Are we just replacing the bricks or are we?
We would be replacing.
We're doing the whole thing?
All the cracked concrete, where we're having the cracks going on, we would be replacing those areas, but the primary thing is removing the bricks because you can see they settle differently. When you lay bricks, you have to let them over time settle before you put concrete with that.
Would it be more cost effective to just make it concrete and not have the decorative brick?
This would be move out of bricks and make it all concrete. Remove bricks and build the concrete. Correct. Tennis courts. All seven tennis courts have been added to the project. I think the pictures pretty much explain this one of what's going on. Even if you walk over there, there is grass growing through some of them. Our guys do a great job in seal coating and patching and trying to get rid of those cracks as much as they can, but it is becoming a major safety hazard, so the tennis courts are a priority. John Glenn High School, and I think this is one of those pictures that we're saying it maybe doesn't do it justice and we will work to get to the pictures that will a little bit better show some things that need to take place over there. This would be providing air conditioning over in that auditorium that will allow the high school to use their own auditorium over hot, on hot days for events. Anybody has a 10 senior awards or scholarship night, it does get quite hot in there with all those individuals at the end of May. So adding air conditioning over there, we just add for a much more comfortable space for a lot of events that take place up in the high school. We would remove and replace the plaster ceiling over there as well, what we would be doing here in the middle school, replace the curtains on the stage, replace the stage, refinish the stage floor, replace tile floors, add new acoustical treatments and wall finishes as what you see on this wall here and, like I said, air conditioning. We would also be adding some AD, American Disabilities Act seating, which we don't currently have in this room, so some seats would come out. Seats that are currently broken, we have found a vendor at this time and our guys have been working diligently to repair those and in order to make sure that all seats are functional in that room. But other than that, we have looked at them and these seats are in a much more usable state than what the middle school is.
So, so my question is, so the seating is not included?
Seating is not included in this, no. This is only seating that would be included would be remove a few seats so that we can put in ADA accessibility. Okay. The next question is, the price of this is almost as much as the price of the middle school auditorium, correct?
Oh no, that wasn't the question I was going to ask.
It was a question that was raised.
It was a question in that book.
It was a question that was raised as we did our building walkthrough and just so you know, the middle school, we are replacing all the seating, the high school, we are adding air conditioning. So that's why you're going to see similarities in cost in that.
So going back to the seating, it is a high use of area, it is, again, it uses a plaster, it is the original seating, it is the original auditorium, it is not the original one. Because it seems to me, it appears that, and I've been in that auditorium quite often, that there is a good percentage of seating that is broken, not even we fixed it.
We, like I said, we were able to locate the vendor, get or find a vendor that supplies the materials needed and our maintenance crew has been able to do the repairs that are needed to fix these seats.
When I arrived last year, that was a concern that I had, there were so many broken seats within the high school auditorium that it was explained to me at that time that their parts weren't available and that our guys, our crew were manufacturing them themselves to kind of take broken seats to create parts to fix other seats and that's why there were missing gaps and things like that. Since that time, we've been able to identify a vendor to sell us the parts, enabling us to repair the broken equipment. It's a game changing find because now we can make repairs rather than a full replacement.
Are there hopes of the middle school seats that are free and really?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And multicolored and? So as well as those large projects, there's still some other larger projects, the science room renovations, as I mentioned earlier, we originally had five, we dropped this down to three and that would be doing casework, which is the cabinetry, flooring, ceilings, lighting and finishes throughout the two rooms, I believe it was 231 and 233, that we would be looking to do and that is after conversations with the building administration and the director. Robotics lab renovation, we would reconfigure the woodshop and art offices for a new robotics lab for the program that is shifting from the middle school. Those students that have been heavily involved here in the middle school as they're advancing up to the high school and the robotics program is taking off up there, we need a space for that now, so that is the intent for that. Again, ceiling fans for classrooms over on the second floor. The fire alarm system would be replace the entire system for ADA compliance and add CO detections to tie in. Ventilation and exhaust in certain office areas as well as small group instruction areas. Pipe tunnel abatement, the asbestos in the crawl spaces. Drainage over at the high school would be the west field, the parking lot and the roof drains. Lake Elwood would be no more. Currently, our guys have been doing a tremendous job in getting pumps out there and trying to get the water out of there as quick as possible and they throw it onto the field. We do know the issue, we've had BBS inspectors out there, they know what's going on, we know where the issues are, we have enough money in there to face that, because I know that's going to be your next question, I've learned.
That is definitely a next question. So I can't tell you how many times we've fixed Lake Elwood. So have we investigated, what we've tried, what has failed? I mean, to keep throwing money into the stream of problems, is it a water table problem that will never be fixed? Is it, what is, what is the problem that you've identified and what didn't we do in the past that we're going to do now?
Well, I think we, I had mentioned this at the last meeting, that obviously we looked at the area and we've identified a footage of the area that's in hushing, that drainage should be added to. We have not done soil borings out there to identify what the water table is, that would be something that we would normally do in this design aspect of determine how many pools, but we've allocated enough funding, we believe, to cover an appropriate fix to that area. So no, normally you can't, you can't tell the water table unless you take a soil board and we haven't done that at this junction. We would do that when we do the design, that would be a normal.
So how are you estimating the cost of something you don't know what?
Because in past experience and other projects that we've done, we know what drainage would be appropriate for a rainfall or in a specific area and we've used past logic numbers to come up with an appropriate dollar amount to be assigned to that specific area.
So have you looked at what we've done in the past of how we've tried to solve this problem?
In terms of additional drainage that you put in there?
What have we, because we've grown so much money.
I don't think anything's been done for Lake Elwood. I don't think anything's, I don't think anything's been done for Lake Elwood. Our guys have been pumping that.
Yeah, things have been done.
Yeah.
When the fields were done. I don't know if you could speak to that, John?
Yeah. The, the information that I've seen on drawings that we have of the reconstruction of the whole area indicate there are drainage pools out there. Our investigation is based on having people come in to clean out our catch basins and to determine whether we're getting proper flow out to those drainage pools has kind of indicated there may be blockages in the system. So I believe that's part of what you'll be, the architect will be investigating along with the condition of, you know, the subsurface soil and whether or not we have water paving issues. That's going to be a part, parcel of what their investigation will look. So...
I don't think groundwater is an issue here just because of their location on the island. Again, we could have some clay layers in there, or we could have perch water, but even if we do, we have enough money in there in order to break through that to make sure there are pools that are deep enough that we're going to get down to good drainage sand. So we have accounted for that, but we feel that there are issues going on. It seems like there are enough pools that are there existing, it just seems like the water is not getting to them. So what we're going to have to do, we're going to have to put cameras down there, so we're going to have to try and figure out where the blockages are, we're going to have to dig up, we're going to have to repair those, we're going to have to make what's functional, functional again, figure out exactly what it is and then supplement it if required.
So doing those ground samples and putting cameras down to see if you have anything is not done before you give an estimate of how much it's going to cost?
Typically, no.
Okay.
Because that's a fairly substantial cost to the school district, so normally we fill that into the dollar amount that would be in the bond reference in investigative work as well as what we think foresting scenario, repair work.
Okay, so you know that we have drainage pools that we put in and you also know that the water's not getting to them?
Correct.
I think Fred raises a very crucial point for the board to consider. Much of the expenses that were included in investigating the appropriate actions to take, we can't enlist our architects to hire contractors to do the investigation, to have definitive planning, because we're expending money we do not have. So part of this bond includes the work that's going to be done to correct, to create the correct plans for the, for the contractors to use.
But...
And that goes not just for drainage, but across the board on many of the issues that to truly invest the time, resources and manpower to have a definitive plan for each of these projects would be, I would say, within the millions of dollars range worked into the overall plan is, is the planning itself.
So, you know, I think the concern of the board and the community is that these are projects that have been done before, haven't been completed to satisfaction, haven't resolved the problem. In such, when you're looking at this problem again, do you go back to the design, there was this massive field project done, I don't know, maybe five, 10 years ago? Do we pull out those plans? Do we look at them? Do we see what exactly was done at that point? So we don't have the money for the investigation, obviously, but we are kind of getting a little bit of history to know, you know, we're not going into it blind. And I think that's our concern and the concern of the people that we represent, that, you know, how do we know that this is going to be resolved if you haven't been able to resolve it before? And that's a big, that's a big question.
So I think our, one of our landscape architects, Kurt, did come out here to met with John, went through the plans with them as far as the work that has been done previously, some work has been done as far as trying to figure out what the issues are, so I think we have a pretty good handle on what got done. We think we have a pretty good handle on what the fix is in order to take care of that. So again, I can't tell you for sure what's underground, but we think we know what's going on and, you know, the money is in there, A, to investigate, and B, worst case scenario, to renew. So if it's something less than that and we just find a couple of broken pipes and all it is, is repairing those and it makes the system functional again, and obviously you're going to spend a lot less money to be able to get some of your B list done.
Keeping all this backing up of the piping and soot running in and clay, if you go in and find the pipes are clogged and just clearing them out is what the simple solution is. What happens when that clay falls back in, you ever go back up and pipe it, oh, we're going to be putting in water piping, we're going to be putting in barriers, something falls back into the pipe way. See that the middle school where the facilities plant is, we have that lake there, there's pipes, this reference backing up, what are we doing to alleviate this backing up issue?
So what we'll do is, before we do any design, we're going to have test pourings done out in that area. So we're going to bring in a farm that's going to take several test pourings and is going to tell us exactly what's going on there. Do we have clay in that area? Do we not have clay in that area? That's going to be the first thing we're going to look at, see what kind of issues we have, what the ground conditions are. Then we're going to bring in a farm with a camera and we're going to have them trace those pipes out. So you're going to go pool to pool. So you're going to go to the first pool, see if there is water in, see if there's any blockage in the pipe, you're going to follow that pool to the next pool, you're going to go around in that way. If we find blockages, we're going to bring somebody in with a rotor, it could be tree roots, although probably not because of the location that those, those are in, but, you know, who knows? We're going to try and rotor it out. If we find out that we can't, that means typically that's a break in the pipe, and then we're going to have to excavate, get down to that break and repair the break and then continue that process. So it's a, it's not a one step process, it's a many step process until we actually figure out what's going on. We'll figure out how many pools are there, we'll figure out how many effective leaching feet we have in each of those pools, make sure that it's what the original design was, and then if not, then we'll supplement those pools with additional pools to make sure that we don't have any water there.
The price of the money for encompasses all this investigative work, all this prep work, new water pools, all of that is...
Yes. And hopefully it's a lot less, hopefully it's as easy as a couple of broken pipes and we're good to go.
We're good?
No, we don't like drainage very...
We don't like drainage.
Not good, but we're holding to the, very shortly.
I don't think Mr. Pearson likes flooding either.
Absolutely. We're holding.
Oh, I went to desk.
Okay. Jog wheel on the side.
Got it?
Yes.
I think, yes. So moving on, we have again the ADA renovations in the nurse's office, the exterior gym and girls locker room entrance, and ADA handrail over at the music ramp. Interior doors hardware, again, in this building, we would be adding smoke doors and we place some interior doors and magnets where that would be needed. Flooring replacement would be nine by nine tiles. In addition, we would be refinishing the gym floor. Here, we would not replace void, we would replace the gym floor. At John Glenn High School, we would just refinish it, we would strip it down to the natural layer and then have it repainted and refinished. The floor currently, the John Glenn High School logos and everything is now currently green, it is no longer Elwood blue, so it would, is our goal to get it back to that blue color, and that is just basically from all the waxing and the treatments that we're doing on those floors year after year has caused that discoloring. Exterior wall reconstruction, some control joints and bricks where they are needed. Septic system, we would replace all piping from the septic tank to leaching pools. This is something almost similar to the drainage issue. Back in behind John Glenn High School, we have septic issues. A couple of years ago, we had a major issue where the entire backfield flooded from such a heavy rain, and that was, I believe, at about midnight, one in the morning that we all got that phone call, and our crew was out there 24 hours straight, literally up to their knees and you know what, trying to clean those pools out. The problem that, we did do some investigative work because we were going to fix it ourselves, knowing the issue that we had, and it did back up, and we have insurance came out to get the, the fix of the damage to the building. But we did find at that time that the piping is destroyed, so we do need to do new pipes to connect all of the pools so that we have proper drainage in the septics behind the high school. New scoreboard for the baseball field, this is for the varsity baseball field right out here, and football field renovations, we have $350,000 in there to level out the football field and correct drainage issues that are going on at the football field. Level it out as well as there's money in there to repair any sprinkler issues that we may be having over there once we do that leveling out.
I have a question on that last slide. Do we know how common it, common it is to have a baseball scoreboard?
Mr. Chen, you had left too early, but I can tell you just from my own experience, having worked in a few districts and attended lots of sporting events, I would say it's probably more common to not have an electronic scoreboard for baseball than it is to have one. There are a number of school districts that certainly do have an electronic scoreboard like we have on our soccer and football fields for baseball, but I would say it's probably less common than for some other sports. Another point that I would like to make about the slide that Mrs. Lachlan has out, those football field renovations would be contingent upon the second proposal regarding the turf field. Obviously, if the board does consider and places that separate proposition, that way we'd excavate the field and bring in a synthetic field, that $350,000 would be reallocated to other projects that we are keeping on the, on the separate.
What was the rationale or thinking to put the scoreboard, the baseball in proposition one as opposed to proposition two where it seems like the other athletic things are...
Surprisingly...
I understand the football field renovations, because that's a question.
Surprisingly, over the course of last year and throughout last baseball season, we were approached about adding a scoreboard by more members of the community than, than many other topics.
So it was as a result of the surveys from community input as well?
There's been a good call for a scoreboard to be entered into the box to be filled from parents of students who participate in baseball.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the gym floor in the high school. If we were, if we're going to sand it and redo it, how many layers left do we have on it? Like in, if we're going up to the bottom, John, with 15 year life expectancy, what do we do now versus 15 years? Do we have enough time on that gym floor to hold up for the next 15 years?
I'm not sure when the last resurfacing was done, but we certainly can strip it down 10 years ago. So it was 10 years ago it was last done, we certainly have enough there that we can strip it back down and continue to wax and such, and we will probably gain another 10, 15 years out of that before it goes green.
So we're okay.
Yes. So, yes.
The, the football field renovation has nothing to do with the track?
Correct. So, good point. That was raised, and we had actually BBS's expert in that area come out this morning to walk our track, to take a look at it, to see and to gain some history on when the last time it was resurfaced, how many times it's been redone. If it's been done twice already, it would have to be ripped down and redone altogether. Fred, do we have an answer from Kurt's investigation this morning?
We do, actually, a little more information tonight, because we did not know when the track was originally installed. Apparently, the track was installed in 1994. So actually, that's, that's very good that you've gotten that many years out of it. Typically, the rubber surface is good for 15 or 20 years, you've got more than that. So it's our understanding that that track has been, I'll say resurfaced, but it's a spray, it's a structural spray that they spray on top of it, almost like, I don't want to call it spraying, but really just a color layer. That's happened twice, so we did the second one back in 2012, so five years ago. Those structural sprays typically last seven, eight years. The reason we didn't see the track in the VCSR is back in 2015, when we walked out, it was only three years after the track had been resurfaced, so we did not include that work in there. However, if you are considering bond reference, it might make sense because like a roof where you can only put two layers, you can't put a third layer on there, the same thing holds true with structural spray as well. So what we would have to do is we would have to take the rubberized surface off down to the asphalt, leave the asphalt there, make any minor repairs in the asphalt that are necessary, and then put a new rubberized surface on there. So it's not a full track replacement, it's only a replacement of a rubberized surface. So we're looking at about $350,000 in order to do that work. Again, when Kurt walked the track, he said that, he said that the track actually right now is in fairly good condition, doesn't need to be done certainly today, but, you know, it's hard to tell, probably three or four years from now is when you're going to see deterioration, deterioration start to occur in that structural spray that got applied there, and by that point, you're not going to have a choice, you're going to have to take off that top layer of surface.
And how long does that last if you do that, the $350,000?
About 20 years.
About 20 years?
Yeah, you're going to have to do structural spray probably halfway through that.
Okay.
It's like a re-polling up.
And how much is that?
I think $75,000 to $100,000.
Oh, boy, okay.
So at 10 years, we would have to do a structural spray? And if we wanted to redo the track now, I mean, we're just, as it is for next three to four years, the concrete, the asphalt that's underneath it, do we run the risk of that to come to more damage and then probably come to more cost?
Well, I think our assumption at this point is because you've got such a long duration out of that track and two rounds of structural spray, our assumption is that that asphalt's in good shape. If not, you would see cracks propagating up through the track, and we are not seeing that out on that track. That track seems very stable, so it seems like the base that got done and the asphalt that got done was done very well. So we don't think that that's going to be an issue, so we feel it's just really stripping off the rubberized surface and reapplying that.
And if we wait three to four years, you still think that the asphalt would stay intact and wouldn't present any issues?
Yes, that's our feeling, it seems to be really cheap. The other thing I wanted to mention too is that we talked about EDA walkways out to that area. That is included in the synthetic turf proposition, we do not have that as part of the current bond proposal. That is an additional $150,000, and our concern is if we redo that track as part of the State Education Department, it's going to look for us to make those areas ADA accessible as well.
So that would be $450,000?
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Plus a hundred.
Three fifty.
Three fifty plus... Oh, a hundred and fifty, not a hundred.
I've got a question. If the, if, will they try to do that by us just doing the $350,000 for, you know, re-leveling the football field? In other words, if we don't do the turf field, but we just do proposition one, and in that we have re-leveling the field, the football field, will they turn around and say, well, you're going to need that, we're going to do this stuff?
We think that once we touch that field, whether it be renovation of the grass field or installation of synthetic turf field, that the State Education Department is going to require us now to make winters and that space be kept accessible. What I'd hate to see happen is us not put it in the bond at this point and have that required later on, we don't have the money for it.
Is it, is it included? The ADA?
No, it's on the turf field piece.
But you're saying even if we do proposition one and touch that field, it has to be included?
Fred, would you be able to call up to facilities planning to find out what they would recommend if we just did the infield, non-turf field?
I'm sure if I asked them, they're going to tell us it's the...
Is it something like that we're grandfathered in, so if we do not touch the field, we don't have to be, it is, that's grandfathered cost?
If you don't touch the field, the state doesn't know what you have.
Doesn't know what you have when you talk about it. Okay.
So technically not grandfathered in, because as of 1988, EDA was passed as a law and you, all of your programs are supposed to be made accessible, so not, not really grandfathered in, they just don't know what you have, but once we do a field, they do.
So I think that's an important point Mr. McDonald just raised then, if we're looking at a $350,000 improvement to our football field, the allocation should truly be $500,000. So it would be to identify $150,000 elsewhere in the project to reduce in order to maintain our current level.
Well, we would be doing 350 on the football field plus 500 for the track. 350...
Either at the one...
350 for the football field, 350 for the track, 150 for the ADA accessibility.
And if...
Twenty one dollars.
When, when you go to, to do the $350,000 project, at that point, you're going to just test the asphalt to make sure, make sure when you're coating, to make sure that it is what you estimated to be, that it's good. If it is not, what is a total or pair of the track, a redo of the track is needed, what is that cost and what is the lifespan of that?
So what we'll do is when we get ready to do that, we're going to do some test forings through the track surface and then through that asphalt. Really, what we're going to look at is the condition of the base underneath. Was it set up properly? Is the asphalt appropriate thickness? Is there good adhesion in there? We're going to look at all of those things. We're assuming the answers are yes, because that track has been there as long as it has, and it's still in very good condition. So we'll do that. We're not really going to know the condition of the asphalt until we take the rubberized surface off. So what we typically do is we put an add alternate in to mill up that asphalt if required. So the base bid will include repair of that asphalt where necessary. There might be a couple of cracks here or there, it might be a couple of low spots. Those are all taken care of in the base bid. We'll put an add alternate in to mill that up and put new asphalt on, so we know what that price is. But again, we're fairly confident that what we're going to find is going to be good asphalt under there, because it's well past the life expectancy of what we would have expected that the track to have, and we have not had settled the track in there. So I think the asphalt was done well when the track was originally installed, and we're not going to have an issue. The asphalt itself will last 40 to 50 years.
Okay. But a total redo of a track, is that over a million dollars? Two million dollars? And is there any sort of... I don't want to put any hope to, you know, a number. I'm just trying to get, you know, I don't want to be penny wise, Donald Foulish type of thing. I want to look at it and say, you know, am I looking at spending $500,000? Am I looking at spending $600,000 for a new track? That's kind of what I'm trying to gather. And am I looking at a 20-year lifespan or a 50-year lifespan? Because again, this is something that we don't want to revisit three years down the line, four years down the line.
So a brand-new track to rip it out is going to be an additional $300,000 if you ripped out all of the asphalt, went down and rebuilt the entire track. That will give you a 40-year life expectancy. You should be getting an additional 20- or 25-year life expectancy out of your existing track if we take it down to the asphalt, it's in good condition, and we redo the rubberized surface.
Okay, thank you.
So total proposition in summary, we tried to fit everything on one sheet, but now that we're onto one proposition, it kind of got a little too busy. So this is it by building, Harley Avenue, 3.7 million. Boyd, just over 5 million. The middle school, 14 million. John Glenn, 12. We added 50,000 in there for bond council fiscal advisor fees. Just so you know, architect fees are loaded in the quotes and the prices that we have on each separate project item. So total project to be just under 35 million at 34,998,600. Proposition 2, this is for the synthetic field, which would be an all-purpose field. It would not necessarily just be a football field. It's now usable for lacrosse, soccer. It is striped for all of those sports. We would look to add a new concession stand with bathrooms over that area, 1.3 million. The field itself, 2.1, and that does include the EBA-compatible sidewalks, a new press box to replace the existing one, and that is a total proposition of 3.6 million.
I have general questions on the roofs, if you want me to ask that.
Um...
Just the roofie, do you want me to...
I think I'm almost done.
Okay, when you get, when you're done.
Alternate items, so as I mentioned earlier, should we see some surplus funds identified after the projects are complete? We can then use that money for some additional work. However, we do have to identify what that additional work could potentially be at this point in time. So some proposed work, the list was driven from the original proposition, as I mentioned earlier, some of the items we took out, as well as energy performance contract items that we feel are necessary but were not picked up through the original proposals. And again, we are interviewing the contractors on Tuesday of next week, with the hopes that September, the next September meeting, we'll be able to bring forward a recommendation for that project as well. So these are the alternate items. I'll go through these quickly. We've discussed these at the last meeting, the wall paneling, district-wide, we would replace the sheet rock, a new generator for the network control room, vinyl floor tile replacement, as I mentioned, this is the additional 400,000 we pulled out. Exterior door repairs, district-wide repair throughout, we're seeing some doors that are starting to go. Security vestibules, we have right now a placeholder of 60,000, that's a security vestibule at John Glenn High School and the middle school. That is just really creating an entryway for heat control, as well as just someplace where individuals entering the building to get out of the weather conditions can come in, introduce themselves, get their badge, and then enter the building. They don't have full access to the building right away. Water-cooled condensers, this is at the kitchen walk-in boxes, the refrigerators. Satellite wireless clock systems in different buildings. Replace heating and ventilating units where we would need them, those are units that are falling apart in our buildings. Refurbish the gym air handling unit in the middle school and high school. The Danfoss valves are heating controls. Insulated cafeteria air handling unit piping, we would take care of the exposed piping, and landscape the play area at the middle school to 40,000 dollars. Question on these that I could potentially answer, I just went through that because Mr. McDonald educated me. I'm going to go on that one.
So the Dan, I cannot say...
Danfoss valves.
The Danfoss valves. They are an upgrade to ADN control units because we are one zone, you know, what is the...
Well, there are localized thermostatic control. Many instances, existing radiation might have been controlled in a zone fashion, or may even have a local stack, but due to the antiquated nature of our pneumatic control system, may not be properly controlled now, and to replace the existing controls with what was there would be fairly expensive. You can put in this device that will thermostatic control locally, and it's a much more cost-effective way to do it.
So locally would be corridors, locally is classrooms, locally is...
Well, not classrooms.
But it might be zones, like wings?
No.
I believe that the Danfoss valve recommendation, I think they might have been in classroom bathrooms.
Yeah, something like that.
That have radiation in them, but they're actually controlled by the thermostat out in the classroom. So those bathrooms are either too hot or too cold many times. So by putting in a Danfoss valve, it actually will allow that bathroom to regulate itself as far as the amount of heating.
So is it only for bathroom areas, or is it for...
It's a localized baseboard radiation.
Okay. So we get a lot of complaints about it. Some classrooms are boiling hot and some are freezing. This wouldn't fix that problem, or...
The energy performance contract is fixing that problem.
Okay, so that's a totally different problem.
Completely different issue district-wide than the energy performance contract.
Gotcha.
And this wouldn't fall underneath that, because it's an upgrade and...
Well, one of the reasons it's on the alternate list is it may get taken care of in the EPC.
Okay.
But as of right now, none of the four contractors have proposed the Danfoss valves as part of their solution. We are still discussing spoke with them, so it might end up eventually in the EPC, but as of right now, it's...
If you upgrade the heating system, as you said, you're doing under the energy performance contract, could this be null and void, or is this, you have to be done regardless?
It has to be done regardless.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on this one?
Can you just explain why the security...
Vestibule?
Vestibules are not under an energy performance contract? Because it gives you that kind of area so that the...
I will try to do my best and may ask Professor John to jump in.
Originally, when the concept was suggested that this might be a possible way to get them done, I don't know that we were actually fully into the whole thing with the bond. So it was an attractive idea to look at it in respect to the EPC. Now that we've gotten back the RFPs from the potential contractors, we're seeing many of them didn't include it, and those who did chose a very poor payback in terms of what you have to expend and the kind of savings you get associated with it. So we're not really thinking that this is going to be a proper thing for the EPC. It makes more sense to try to do it either through the bond, or if we really want to have it, maybe there's projects we can do going forward through our budget funding that might be a little...
That is another important point Mr. McDonald raises. Not all of these items placed on the alternate list are cost prohibitive from us being able to do within a regular operating budget. While we would struggle to do them all within the same fiscal year, some of these projects, like the vestibules, are something that we probably include in future budgets if we do not include them in the bond.
So that's 60,000 dollars, it's 30,000 a building?
That's correct.
Correct, and that's just a one figure at this point in time.
Gotcha.
Okay, thanks. So in summary, we're looking to put two propositions forward, the 34.9 million and then the 3.6 million. And to note, Proposition 2 cannot pass without Proposition 1 passing. So we will never be doing turf fields without repairing our roofs. Safety and health, health and safety of our buildings and our students is our priority. So we will not allow for the fields to pass without the other items being taken care of. We are holding a bond forum September 18th at 7:00 PM in the middle school auditorium. It will pretty much be a repeat of what this presentation is, tweaked as per recommendations we received tonight, and further work that we'll continue to do over the next couple of weeks. In addition, we all, like I mentioned, meeting with the energy performance contractors on Tuesday night, so we'll have a better feel a little bit more on that proposal going forward for the alternate list. Then we are going to ask the Board of Education to take a vote on the proposition September 28th at that point in time, actually at both of those meetings. BBS will be in attendance as well as bond counsel. Mr. Jackson from bond counsel will be attending both the forum as well as that board meeting to assist you in that resolution adoption, as he is working on preparing it right now. It is, like Dr. Boss said, we are kind of at crunch time after tonight's meeting to try to finalize as much as we can the number that we want to lock in on, as well as a broad-scope project. We have to do what's called a secret review, it's an environmental assessment of the projects that are being done and the impact that they have on the environment. The outside agency doing that is currently doing it last night and this night. They're walking all the buildings and going through and taking the assessment, so that they can get that over to bond counsel, so he can start drafting resolutions for us. So that is our timeline that we're on, coming down to crunch time. We've done some great work so far. Facilities Committee has been an integral part of this in the past two years. And now, since May, we've been working diligently with the committee, with the architects, and with the board to try to get this down to the final list. Final questions, Mrs. Teff.
So you had given us a report on the spreadsheet that covered for each line item, for each building, the cost. And one of the things, correct, one of them was the roofing. And I'm going to make an assumption that the roofing is, let's say, it's a hundred dollars per square foot, and that the disparity in the cost between Harley, Boyd, middle school and high school, because middle school and high school, the roofing is just so much more, is because of the square footage? And solely because of that and not because of the condition of roof for term of project or different levels of roof? It's just the basic square footage and...
They only fire a full roof replacement.
Okay, yeah, it just seems like, you know, they don't really seem that much more bigger than, you know, Harley doesn't seem that small, or it's a double tier, but okay, I just wanted to clarify that. One other question that had come up at the Taxpayers Association was about, no, if this is tied to the state, that we could get that. How does that work? If you can just explain that a little bit?
Every project gets aided as we put it through. You can never do a project on the outside without doing something on the inside. So in order to do the tennis courts, and we see state aid on it, we have to tie it to an inside project. Our aid ratio is at 73.5%, I believe. That's our enhanced aid, it's 63.5, and then there's 10% incentive aid, so it's 73.5. Don't know why they have it that way, but we get 73.5. Every building, every project gets evaluated differently, at different ratios, depending on the work that you're doing. In addition to how quickly you're going to be able to do the work is another piece of this also, is, you know, we want to get these roofs done right away. You're doing, you know, project for project, you're going to get that through quicker, and we'll start seeing the aid on those projects flow faster. The renovations in the auditorium and the cafeteria, those things, they're going to take a little longer to get approved, therefore you're not going to see the aid come through as quick, because we can't file for the aid until the project is complete.
So it goes by project?
So SCD, it does, it goes by project. So this will be, we're not going to submit 34 million dollars worth of building aid at 73% at once. It's going to be put through in chunks. So for that, what we'll be doing is what's called a ban, a bond authorization note, and when Mr. Jackson is here from Hawkinsdale Field, our bond counsel, he can explain a little bit further on what the difference is between a bond and a ban. But we'll start doing what's called the ban as we start doing projects. And that's just the short-term borrowings, to give us the cash flow in order to get the projects going. And then after a certain point in time, where we're almost complete with the entire project, we'll turn that whole thing into a bond. And that's where we then have those fixed interest and payment schedules over the 15 year life. But during that time that we're seeing the ban money flow, we'll start filing for state aid based on the projects and as they complete.
Okay, and that comes out of the overall bonds coming on?
Correct, so every project is broken down by project, by building. They're all given, and it depends on how we group the projects. So once we get through this, that's when we're going to start working with BBS, and we're going to start going through priority lists. We all know roofs are our number one priority, and we're going to start tying certain projects together. What can we get approved quickest in state aid through facilities planning to get the work done as quick as possible? We need to tie these things also with when can we do the work? The roofs we want to get done over the summer months when the students are not here. So there's a lot of little different intricacies that go into play. So the state aid is going to flow over different various points in time as we complete projects, because they used to start paying at an earlier point in time, they changed the ruling on that, and now we don't start seeing the money until we actually finish the project and file that final cost report.
So what does this mean to the average, you know, community member who comes out to vote yes for the bond? You know, when, how does that affect them? Do they start immediately paying for the bond? Like, you know, do their taxes...
We're going to be making ban payments, you're still making payments against a loan. So we're taking what's called temporary loans. Your bond anticipation note is, I'm borrowing money in slow increments in anticipation of turning this into a long-term loan. So you're taking short-term loans, you're financing that every year. So we're going to start making those principal and interest payments right away. It's not going to be on the full 34 million, it's going to be a smaller chunk. So it'll be maybe 11 million, and then we'll add to that 11 million another 10 million. So it's going to go through a process, and that's why the timing of this is so critical, is so that we start taking on those, as our current payments start decreasing, we start bringing on those ban payments to even it out. And then when the full bond is paid off that we currently have, we're taking on that other full bond at the same time. So that's why, right now, is why we're pushing to try to get this through now, because the timing is critical, in order for the taxpayers to not such, see such ups and downs in their taxes. Never mind that, it's also, plays a game in our tax cap formula, and how much we're going to be able to spend in our general fund budget. So like I said, there's a lot of moving pieces on this, but the biggest thing is making sure that we take on that full payment of debt, that new 2.9, 2.5 million dollars of debt to replace the current 2 million dollars of debt that we're paying now, to have the minimal impact to the taxpayers.
So is it on a sliding scale? Am I...
Yeah.
You can say about each person. Are we...
Yeah, but it's...
That was the question. Was it going to be based on your assessment?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is that based on the, so when that person hits the tax bill, let's say in June, is it going to be based on the 34 million dollars, whatever their assessment is?
No, it's going to be... It's going to be based on the current payment at that time in the year that we have to juggle fund budget.
So it's kind of like when you do a renovation at your house, you get that eight-year period and it kind of slides, I'm just sort of speaking. Am I making a correct analogy?
You're not going to see this separately in your tax bill? That's why it's so hard to predict what is it going to be, what's the effect on the taxpayers? Because of the tax cap formula, it adds that little nuance to it. So there's so much in that formula, and then the building aid numbers along with your debt payment goes into account for that.
So you're not going to see something on your taxes that says, this is what you're paying toward the bond?
Correct.
You just, it's this multifactorial formula...
You're going to just have your one school tax bill, which is, because what you'll see you're paying for the bond is going to be the payment we have built in the regular fund, general fund budget.
And we've kind of given them the task, given the administration the task of figuring out what that additional payment would be for the average households, and gave some direction that we wouldn't want to see it any more than 20 dollars per month to pay back.
Correct, and so the numbers we're using is what current assessed values are at as of 2016, '17. '17. The most, that's the most up-to-date information we have.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I do.
Can you explain to us, and to anybody that will ever watch this presentation, the benefit that a school district has to carry some debt? So while we're expiring debt, why it would be good to take on debt, not just to have a minimal tax effect, but isn't there a good reason why a school should always carry a little debt?
Well, we carry it for rating purposes. I mean, just as anybody, you want to carry some debt and stay current with it, it gives you good credit. For the school districts though, and it's most critical now with the tax cap error, is that you want to maintain debt on your books in order to maintain your programs within your district. If you have your debt come off, and I know, you know, taxpayers in meetings we've had with them already have said, why, you're going to save me money, why pay the additional $20 a month when I can save the additional $20 a month? It's not true because of the tax cap formula. They're actually going to see a swing in the budget as a result, and the general fund budget is going to take an effect. So you're affecting your educational programs by removing debt from the books. You're also not receiving building aid anymore. Building aid is a source of revenue that we have on our books. It offsets the bond payment that we make, but it's a revenue stream. We receive almost $1.6 million a year in building aid every, at this point in time. So, it's important just to maintain a steady debt service, is what we call it, on your books, more so now for the tax cap purpose.
I would encourage that to always be explained really well in every event, because it's counterintuitive and it's helpful.
So, one question about the work that gets done. I know we're 18 months, two years out as far as anything gets done. They're getting some dire need. Are we going to see that work be expedited until there's nothing we can do about the tennis courts ready, as in dire straits?
There is nothing we can do. It is all in state education's hands. The only thing we could do is prioritize our list and try to do one-for-one projects. In kind, yeah, in kind, for, in kind. Replace a roof for a roof. No major, there's no construction, nothing else going on up there. It's just take off the roof and put a new one on. Those type of projects could potentially go through a little faster. The additional piece to that is SCD has hired outside BOSI's programs to assist in, I'm taking my cues, they are working with the BOSI's to process projects quicker. State education facilities planning is understaffed, as along with all of state education. And by doing that, they're allowing initial reviews of projects going through the BOSI's, and then projects that need a little bit further in-depth engineer review, they do need to go to SCD facilities planning. In addition, if you want your project to go through even quicker, you can pay a slight fee to that BOSI's and they will expedite the entire process for you. So it is something we would have to take a look at. We've not received what that pricing is. Last we heard is that they've contracted with the BOSI's. I don't know if they've actually started working with them yet. We actually have a workshop next week that we're going to. It's a semi-annual update that we get from the state on state aid and all the old things going on up there. So we're eager to hear if they've made any progress in the capital planning side of things at SCD.
I can actually give you a little bit more information on that. We did respond to the RFP. Back in spring of 2016, we were one of the 10 firms that was asked by State Education Department to review projects from other architecture and care firms, which we did. This time, they decided to do a different type of arrangement. They are going through Osbego BOSI's, who is going to organize this. So Osbego BOSI's is going to do a preliminary review when a project goes up there and make sure that they feel that the project looks like it's complete. The drawings are there, the specs are there, the paperwork looks like it's going. Then at that point, you will have the ability to pay for an expedited review. And in the RFP, they actually set dollar amounts, and it's based upon the dollar cost of the project with the bond reference, representing all that went up. However, we have not heard back yet from Osbego BOSI's. I'm assuming that we will probably have to go up there, we'll probably have to interview. They'll interview several different firms, and then there will be several different firms that'll be on that list. Because last time, they would not allow us to rejoin, review any projects down in Long Island area. For some reason, they didn't want us looking at our competitors' properties. I can imagine why. So, we were looking at, you know, northern New York, western New York, and I'm sure they didn't do the same thing. So, it has not been ruled out yet. They are still working on it, but we did some of the RFPs. I would say maybe three to four or so. So the process is moving, but just not finalized. Hopefully, it will allow you to either pay and get an expedited review, or if the different districts do that, it'll bring SCD review time down to something a little bit more reasonable, a lot more reasonable, closer to what it should be.
I think facilities planning is tired of us all complaining. And there are a lot of bonds out there right now. A lot of work is being done in all the buildings. Everybody was up for their five-year review, and as a result, this is what comes of it. We find out what's going on in our facilities, and we need to do major work and repair. And therefore, everyone's starting to do bond votes, borrowing money, capital projects, facilities planning, understaffed, back up, 18 months.
Any other questions from the board? So, I want to thank you, Carrie, and Dr. Bossard, and your staff for working so diligently in these past two weeks for the beginning of school, hiring of new staff, dealing with crises with staffing, and answering our many, many, many emails over the past couple of weeks. I just want to thank you for your patience and for your thorough job, that every answer you came back with was timely and thorough. So I just want to publicly thank you for that. A couple of things come out at me.
Mind if I sit?
Of course, I don't mind if you sit. Stand.
This is my longest presentation, two hours.
Wow. Forty-seven minutes.
I didn't talk as fast.
So, a couple of things kind of stand out at me, and I'm going to ask for feedback after I talk about it and see if my colleagues agree. That we have the track that will, if we're looking 15 years in advance, will definitely need some attention before 15 years. And all of the projects that we're looking at need a 15-year look ahead. So that would be $350,000 plus $150,000 for that walkway, which we're going to have to pay for anyway, even if we touch the whole field. So that's another $150,000 on top of the bond. And then, we have this vinyl flooring that we took out $400,000 from. But what you're telling me is that every time an asbestos tile cracks, we have to put a piece of tape on it, because we can't lift up one tile and just replace it anymore. We have to totally abate that situation. And it might be more costly to do it all at once and get rid of all the asbestos in our buildings. So that's about $1 million, $900,000 of a track, and really abating the vinyl tiles if we want to save money doing that. There's a couple of things that kind of stick out to me in the presentation that might be more negotiable than a track or removing asbestos. And that would be the locker room in the middle school. That seems like a $1.2 million project that absolutely, if it's rusty and has a danger to children, we need to look at it. But I think we need to fine-tune that project, especially if the showers are not being used. If kids just want curtains so that they can have privacy to change, let's give it to them for a lot less than $1.2 million. So I think we need to look at that project and decide if that's the best way to spend $1.2 million. The other one's a little more tricky, because I work in an office also that somebody else controls my air conditioning, and I dress in layers. I have sweaters, I have little short-sleeve shirts, I have a fan, and I have a portable heater. So depending upon what that person's mood is, I either am plugging things in, taking things off, putting, and so I understand the frustration of that. But for $700,000, I, if you were here in the summer months and we didn't have air conditioning, if we didn't have window boxes, I would say, no, that's not reasonable. But there is air conditioning there, so to spend $700,000 on that, I don't think that's a good optic, and I don't think it's reasonable. And then the last thing is the baseball scoreboard. I'd like to see if, if a lot of districts don't have it, I'm not saying that, you know, then we shouldn't have it. I'm not saying that at all. But have we looked into the booster club? Have we looked into some of the sports alumni folks? Have we asked them for this kind of money? And would they be willing to subsidize that somehow so that we wouldn't have to spend this full $70,000? So if we're looking for a new $900,000, maybe we could look at those three areas, the air conditioning, the locker room, and that scoreboard, and see if we could tweak that a little bit to get some of that money. Again, trying to keep that no more than $20 per month for the taxpayers is really important to us, and even lower if we can do that. But yet, still really updating our facilities, and I don't know if there's agreement, disagreement, or...
I agree completely with the tile situation. I kind of view it a totally different scale, but, you know, if we're doing some of the tennis courts, let's do all of the tennis courts. If we're doing a majority of the vinyl tiles, let's rip them all out, do the asbestos abatement all at once rather than doing here and there, and then in a few years when we do a few more rooms or going through that whole, I feel like we definitely should do it all at once. It's a big cost, but I agree that it makes sense to do that. It'll save taxpayers in the long run to do it all at once, even if it's a larger lump sum upfront. And I agree with your suggestions too. I would say maybe we should, this is more of a can of worms possibly, but maybe we should consider looking at all of the offices and not just district office, and where they already have air conditioning units and maybe not replace those if they have window units.
That's what I meant. I meant, I meant all of them.
All the admin offices in all buildings?
If they have air conditioning already, then maybe, right, it's an aggregate of $700,000. So really looking at that whole project and saying, is that the best way to go right now?
We already have some...
Yeah, again, albeit not perfect, and I can relate to that.
I agree with you, and I like your, and I agree with the suggestions. I think we have to keep in mind that what our primary goal is, the safety and health. So, an issue such as the tiles, definitely, I've been in projects where, you know, have done abatement, and it is, it's costly. So I would hate to be, you know, again, penny wise, dollar foolish with that. And, I'm just trying to think of one.
The track?
Huh? The track? The track, definitely. I mean, I agree with all the points. I agree with looking at the, I do remember what I was going to say. In terms of the large group areas, okay, and specifically, whether children take, or students take, the region's tests, where they're taking tests. If you've walked in the building, and they're in a cafeteria, and they're taking a two-hour region's exam, it's hot as hell. And so I am in full agreement that with, you know, Dr. Bossard, that the large areas have to be, have some sort of control, and we have to have a place for students to go. And, so that would be my only difference from what you were, you were saying.
The cost of the air conditioning of that $700,000 is not any of the larger groups. That's included in the renovation of that particular area, in each of them.
Okay. I would just add one more thing. I would recommend that, because I like what you just said about this health and safety of students, I would recommend that the baseball scoreboard goes on to Proposition 2.
That was my next question, is your suggestion, Julia, are these items falling down to Prop 2 or are they going down to the alternate list? How are we looking to achieve these other items before we're moving from Prop 4 to Prop 5?
If I may suggest, anything that we are seeking to reduce or eliminate tonight would go immediately to the alternate list to be considered through the surplus fund. Hearing the baseball scoreboard being moved to Proposition 2 is certainly something we can adjust moving forward. But I would need full agreement from the board in order to do that. I see three, nine, four. Okay. We can make that adjustment prior to the next meeting.
So you would recommend putting, are you going to look at that locker room renovation and see if we're going to reduce it, or you just mean putting that whole project on that surplus?
No, I think that needs to be a reduction. I think that the relevant research to do with our architects is targeting the locker room space and not remodeling and replacing the shower units, and I think that will greatly reduce the cost of the project.
And really involving the physical education teachers and the students that use that area of what that space would really look like in a more useful way?
And I'll remind the board that the locker room facilities down at High School were in our original proposal, and is already been, our locker rooms are an area that have not been touched in some time. It would be beneficial to invest some serious dollars into those areas, but to say it's a greater priority than some other items on the list is difficult.
So, in doing a lot, a lot of these larger projects, when you did your initial costs to figure out what the project was, and you obviously took the problem, looked at what the related solution is, and forecast out based on, you know, what the industry cost for structural understanding was, so you're kind of doing a forecasting on that. And I guess just looking at the scope of these larger projects that maybe we can get a little bit here, a little bit there, like the old expression, sharpen the pencil, but not with an understanding that we don't want to hurt ourselves coming to, because I hate to just see certain things cut out, and then, like you said, on very much, at the taxpayer meeting, you brought up that, a very, you know, significant point that we really do have to look where, not today, but really where we're going to be 15 years down the line, and is what we're doing today really going to help us at that point?
Which I think the board did a very good job of reminding us in the votes by raising the issue of the track. We have to look at all the projects in that regard. We can live with it today, and our architects are confident the track looks great today and looks good three years from now. But trying to scope it out 15 years, we know we would run into a financial barrier. That's the way we're trying to look at all of our contracts, and using anything as an example, the locker room as an example, we can live with it today. We'll be able to continue to live with it five years from now, 10 years from now, 12 years from now. Not likely, which is why some of the scopes seem larger than what might be necessary today.
If we can just have that fund, that just approach those fundraising groups from the baseball, for the baseball scoreboard, just, I don't know if we've done that before or, but maybe approach them before we put it on Proposition 2, because Proposition 2 is so tightly succinct to that synthetic field, which really tended to be something on the survey of residents that was either you really wanted it or you definitely did not want it. So I'd rather keep it tight if we can. If we can't, then we'll talk about that.
I, I just want to remind the board that the dollar figure on that scoreboard is $70,000.
Yeah, that's true, that's...
It's a very tough number to solicit as a government.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure that's a reasonable request for us tonight particularly, and can you tell us in the next three weeks that we know whether or not we can?
Sure, sure.
So, Barry, will you? When you move all the items to Proposition 2, obviously you're going to now change that cost, it's not the one going to be?
So I will re-ask the question, based on Mrs. Freed's inquiry of my response. Is the board comfortable in shifting the baseball scoreboard to be included in Proposition 2 and changing that overall dollar figure? Or would the board prefer that the baseball scoreboard be considered an alternate item to be addressed if we have surplus funding from the propositions included as a priority? It's an A or B? Or C, forget the whole thing?
I'm voting for B.
Alternate list.
And see if we can subsidize that somehow with other funding?
There is no motion on the table, but I have heard from Mrs. Freed.
I would vote for putting it in Proposition 2, because I think it's a sports enhancement rather than a health and safety issue, and it blends well there.
That's it.
I agree with that, good.
That's it.
That's up to you, James.
If you say B, I have to thank the...
I understand. I also agree, I think it's, it doesn't involve the health and safety, it involves more than any section of Prop 2, which I would like to see as the alternate. I think more the projects that involves the scope of our reasoning going after the bond makes more sense to put in Proposition 2.
Hearing that, we will shift the baseball scoreboard to Proposal B and add an additional $70,000 to that proposition. $70,000 to that proposition. Thank you. Anything else? Speak now.
I will speak quickly. Mr. Sprecher did a nice job of thanking the administration team, and EBS, Donald, everybody. I just wanna personally thank the rest of the board. I think I haven't seen a project with so much collaboration input fall beside my wedding that has really come together so nicely, and so did my wedding, but it's just a testament to all the effort we put in, facilities, all of us, really, with the diligence, we asked a lot of questions, we asked for tiny nod of heads, so we did our homework, and I think we've come to a point now where we're all pleased with the work that we've done, so just the confidence all, all the staff, all of us, and everyone did a great job.
I will echo that sentiment, and thank you, Mr. Tamiya, for raising it. I appreciate the efforts of the board, I appreciate the time you dedicated under what we gave to you as very tight timeline. We know that the end of the summer was just a tactic in our households, as it was here, and we appreciate the focus that you've given to this project and the review of the materials that have been amped up, that we've said to you, it really helped us accomplish the goal of having a proposal to bring forward to you and to share with the community in two weeks. So we appreciate your tenderness to what is clearly a priority. I said at the taxpayers' meeting, I'll say it again, when I arrived as your superintendent last year with a plan of the areas to review and the scope of the entire, your organization in mind, I really felt we reached very high marks in most areas. The one area where I think we suffer real deficiencies is our facilities. In no way, shape, or form have affected the work of our crew, merely because of the age of our facilities, because of the limitations our budgets have had over the last number of years in investing large dollars into our facilities. The need to bring this bond forward became apparent very clearly, very quickly, and since the time I raised the flag, Board's Facilities Committee and the Board of Education has responded to say, "We need to make this a priority, the timing is right now, let's make it happen." And based upon tonight's conversation, I think we are in very good shape to have a very clear proposal to share with the community on the 18th, a motion to bring forward to the board on the 28th, and hopefully the opportunity for a successful vote from the community on November 28th.
Okay, can we move on?
Sure.
Anything else?
Oh, do we have another item?
There you go.
We do, and I have, I have to share with the board that we have a number of candidates to pose tonight on the personnel agenda, and I appreciate your flexibility in allowing me to do that. Each of these individuals did start within the district on a substitute basis on the first day of school, but these appointments would make it retroactive, permanent in nature to the first day. I advise each of these teacher assistants and studio worker that the board has asked to consider tonight, that they did not need to attend the meeting, but they might, may want to watch from home and know that when we got to the personnel agenda. So if any of those candidates are still with us, I'm extremely impressed, and this is the part of the meeting that I told you to be attentive to. How many viewers do we have, Mr. Trink?
Let me see.
I know my mother's not home, so...
Eight.
How many?
Eight.
Eight, that's impressive. How many are on the agenda?
I think I counted one, though, so...
Here we go. If anybody knows who's knowing who the scoreboard is living in.
Can I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda as attached? Motion by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mr. Tamiya. All in favor? Four is yours.
For all those individuals that are included on tonight's personnel list, welcome to the Elwood family.
Excellent. So there's no residents here, but I guess they still have to open it up during March.
We have residents in there.
Oh, yeah. The board encourages all residents to attend its meetings, and this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves and any organization they represent at the meeting. Comments should be as brief as possible, and meetings exceed three minutes. Public discussions of matters relating to staff, students, or others, of which their reputations, privacy, or right to due process could in some way be violated, is prohibited. Okay. Residents from March going once. Twice. Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting on September 28th? Motion by Mr. Tamiya, second by Mrs. Weiss. All in favor? Four is yours. Thank you very much. Thank you for the people watching.